A meeting to order. And we ask Betsy to start us off with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Moment of silence, everyone. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Thank you. And Kyle, if you've called, roll, please, and hello.
Okay, one second. Sarah had just rejoined, so.
I see.
Okay, Broad.
Present.
Ford. You're muted, but I see you. Lancaster. McDaniel.
Here.
McGowan.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Tarniso.
Here.
Smith. Bealman.
Here. I don't understand why why the camera's not working.
We can hear you, though. Stuart?
Yeah, all right.
That'll do.
Taylor.
Present.
Warnock.
Present.
Twelve present, zero absent.
Hey. Are there any? There you are, Sarah. Are there any additions to the agenda? The one thing that I can announce is that the executive session is going to be postponed, I believe, in interest of not staying here till midnight. Is that right, Niva?
Good point.
That's fine.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We have two sets of minutes. The agenda prep minutes from July 7th. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, either wave your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. And then we have the minutes of the meeting on July 21st. Is there a motion to approve? Your second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion in these minutes? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same? Motion carries. Right, then we also have the financial report. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Say second?
Second.
Is there discussion of the financial report? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we come to the time scheduled for public participation. Kyle, have you already explained to people in the waiting room?
No, I have not yet. I was waiting until before we start the public comment.
Okay, well, this would be the time to explain the rules. I can say that people need to identify who they are, and you're limited to three minutes.
Peter, do they also not give their address?
Name and address for people.
Right, name and street address. You're required to record that for the minutes.
Right.
Okay, yeah, and I guess this is so too, if you would like to speak, we're gonna let you, just let me know in any of the three fallen ways. You can either raise your hand on the participants list. You can either type in the chat and just say, you know, I would like to speak. Or there's the Q and A button down at the bottom as well. And just simply saying, I would like to speak, and I'll just go down in order as I get them. So basically, any way that you want to know. I see some hands raised already, so I'm just gonna go down the list. If you would like, should we start now? Council President? Okay, I'm gonna start now, then.
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
It's okay. The first one is Mark Hilliard. So I'm gonna unmute your microphone, and again, if you could list your name and your street address before you start speaking. And then we have a timer set up for three minutes, so we know. So okay, I'm gonna let you speak. Mark, can you hear us? Can we hear you? Hello, Mark?
He needs to unmute himself. There he goes.
All right, finally, it came up. Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Mark Hilliard. I reside in Shalakta, but I work at 1019 Philadelphia Street as the Chamber of Commerce President. I'm gonna be brief, as brief as I can. My comments may be different from many who will speak tonight, because I'm not here to speak in favor of or against the ordinance, nor am I here to debate its merits. What I am here to do is to ask Borough Council to please table the vote on this ordinance, at least until next month's meeting. The reason being is that, over the past few days, I, as I'm sure many of you have, received numerous phone calls and emails from concerned business owners in the borough, many of whom have already taken a significant hit as a result of this pandemic, and they're fearful that even a minor decrease in foot traffic could have a detrimental effect on their business in this current economic climate. Now, while I'm concerned about their plight, I'm also not naive enough to think that these are the only voices of business owners out there, and that there may be many who support an ordinance. So with that in mind, I'm asking Borough Council to table the vote, and extending an offer to have the borough work with our office at the chamber to talk to all the borough business owners, not just a handful of outspoken voices on either side of the issue. I'd like to get a true consensus of where our borough businesses truly stand on the ordinance in its current form. If the majority turn out to be in favor of it, then I can confidently stand and support it with those businesses. If however the majority are against it in its current form, as I fear might happen, then we have some more things to try to figure out together. And I think we can all agree, we want Indiana borough and the county as a whole to be safer, and to be viewed as a safe place to live, work, shop, and dine. And in fact, this was echoed in many of the comments that I've received out over the past few days. Unfortunately, the residing opinion amongst those who commented is that, even though they do want a more level playing field, they don't feel this ordinance is necessarily the answer, as it may prove difficult to enforce, could cost the borough money as individuals go to trial to attempt to fight it, and at the very least creates a black eye for the borough, which will create a loss of visitors and a loss of business. Now, do I believe every person who threatens they'll never come back to the borough or shop here again? Of course not. And I would ask for everybody to use common sense, and please continue to support all our local businesses, no matter the circumstance. But I also think it's foolish to assume that businesses will not lose some customers, and that it will not have some negative impact on the local economy. And that's why, from my seat, I need to make sure that this is truly what is best. And I do believe you all feel the same way. So to do that, I think we all need to put our personal and political feelings aside, gather more data, and it may prove that this is the best option for a safer Indiana, and the local businesses overwhelmingly support it. But I also know there are other options out there, one of which I'm hoping you'll hear about a little bit later tonight, that can promote compliance and promote safety, but do so in a unified positive voice, not one perceived as being framed in punishment or negativity. I think we all need to be unified to get through this. Together, Indiana cannot just be a clever catchphrase that has no meaning. So with that, I ask Council to table the vote until next month. Please work with the chamber, work with our community partners, take the time, gather the necessary to what's best for the physical and economic health.
I think that means you're done.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was our first test of that. So thank you. Okay. And then I'm just gonna go down the list of the hands here. So next, we have Eric Parker. Let me go. Okay, Eric. Can we hear you? And if we can hear you, could you please give us your name and your street address, please?
Yes, my name's Eric Parker. I live at 662 Chestnut Street here in Indiana Borough.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here to encourage Council to pass the proposed, a proposed ordinance that would allow the municipality to levy a fee for people who are not complying with the state's facial covering requirements that are already in effect. One thing I like about the ordinance is that it doesn't enact any new requirements that don't already exist. In fact, it just leaves it at the state requirements that have been in effect since July 1st. So that's a nice thing. I think potentially, it could be a good thing for Indiana Borough economically, because if people, for two reasons. Number one, it can increase the confidence of people who are going out to shop at our local businesses. And if they feel safe, if they feel like they can be safe when shopping, they're more likely to go out and spend their money locally. And number two, masks are effective, and they're one of the most effective ways that we can stop the spread of this virus. So that's going to help economically as well, because if we have a large outbreak in Indiana Borough, our businesses may be shut down by the state, by other health officials, and we certainly want to avoid that. So for the vitality of our downtown businesses, I'd like to encourage this to pass. Wearing a mask is inexpensive. It's easy to do. Almost anybody can do it. There's not a good reason not to wear a mask, and I would argue that wearing a mask is patriotic. It's the patriotic thing to do to keep our fellow community members safe. A lot of our, a lot of our parents and grandparents probably fought in World War II, and I don't think a lot of them were out complaining about the battle armor they had to wear to defend our freedom, and and the least that we can do is wear a piece of cloth over our faces to keep everybody healthy. I'd also like to encourage enforcement to allow on-street dining in downtown Indiana. I wouldn't want to see a lot of crackdown on outdoor dining. I know with the state's restrictions of 25% occupancy, it would be hard for some downtown businesses with their current footprint to keep six feet at all times, so that might be a nice thing to have an exclusion, or just, you know, a variance in enforcement. So once again, I'd like to thank everybody for your time. I think this is an excellent idea. It's a really good thing for Indiana, and encourage you to pass it. Thank you.
Okay. We have two more hands raised. I'm gonna then move on to the next one. Next person to speak is Tammy Curry. Let me click the button here. All right, Tammy, if you could let us know your name and your street address, and then the three minutes is yours. You are muted at the moment. There we go.
Okay, can you see me, is what I want to know?
No, we cannot see you. We can just.
Cannot see me. That does not do me really a lot of good for the material that I have to show you. So I'm gonna start off by saying the same thing. Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy Curry, 30 McLean Road, Indiana. I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna start off by saying the same thing about I'm upset that this would discourage people from attending businesses and visiting businesses downtown. I've read a lot of those posts. I put a post out myself and said, please, do not boycott downtown. I am encouraging people to continue to shop downtown. So contrary to the words that have been said back to me, that someone said I'm telling people not to shop downtown, that's very, very wrong. Very, very wrong. I love our small businesses. In fact, I'm helping small businesses by doing the Indiana PA Country Fair Market. I'm promoting businesses that way in an open-air market. However, I have been shamed for it. I have been called names. I have been said I'm shameful for having an open-air market in which you can it's very easy to social distance there. We do not. We do not ever say you should not or cannot wear a mask. Masks are optional. Masks are up to you, whether you want to wear one or not. A lot of our vendors wear them, some of them don't. They ask the customer, do you want a mask on? They want it on, they put it on. That said, I had a visitor on the 8th from Borough Council who did not wear a mask the entire time this person was there. I do have pictures of that. I have video of that. It did not last five seconds. This person and their spouse was there without a mask. And I asked them if they felt safe there, twice. Did not get an answer. And I said, where is your mask? The person pulled out their mask and fumbled it, and looked at me and said, it really is a choice. Now, tonight, that same individual was at the rally, first with the mask on, and I just had a picture of me, or a picture sent to me of this individual without a mask on. And she had a confrontation with someone, and she said, she is not voting for this. She is opposed to it. So my whole point is, if you've got people on your own council that are opposed to it, we need to know this. We need to know the reasons why. Because I have a picture of someone else on council sitting at a picnic table with someone that just spoke, and the people across from them, not six feet apart, had no masks on. So if you feel safe with your mask on, why do you concern yourself if someone doesn't? For myself, I have two medical conditions that preclude me from wearing a mask for any more than five or 10 minutes. So not a lot more to say, but I'll wrap it up. Bye-bye.
You're muted, Kyle.
Oops, sorry about that. I said there are, we have two more hands raised. Next up is Eric Blank. I'm going to okay, Eric, we should be able to hear you now. Your mic is muted. And if you could please name your, state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes.
Hopefully you can hear me. My name is Eric Blank. I live on 140 North Second Street in Indiana Borough. And I am not really calling, but presenting myself in support of the motion to provide for fines for those people that are not wearing masks. Currently, there is no mandate on this from the state, and we have a great big influx of new IUP freshmen into our borough who, at age 18 and 19, have little to no regard for their own personal safety, because they believe that they are unable to be hurt. And so they are going to ignore these suggestions from the state on mask-wearing. And unless there is some form of a punishment for non-compliance, they are not going to comply, and our best chance for mitigating our exposure and spreading of this virus through the use of mask-wearing will be null and void. So by providing this as a enforcement similar to how you would enforce littering or speeding through a application of a fine, it will help to encourage people to wear the masks. Now, as Ms. Curry suggested, people are feeling safe without masks. I think that that is short-sighted on their point. The mask is not something that protects me from other people. It is something that protects other people from me. And the fact that other people are not wearing masks, I'll, hopefully I'll have time for this little anecdote. I saw a wonderful cartoon not too long ago that showed the idea in a slightly graphic manner, where two people are standing naked, and one person is urinating on the other. By having that, it shows that, you know, you're not protected from the other person when you are naked. If one person is wearing pants and the other person is not, and they're urinating, sure, you're getting wet on the pants. That's a little bit of protection, but it's certainly not going to protect you from the other person's offense. If both people are wearing pants and one person is urinating, at least they're only getting themselves wet. So that's the way these masks work. And that's why we need to have more enforcement. That's why people need to be wearing their masks. Sorry for the long graphic there, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. In that time, I know I said we had two more hands, but we had four more hands, five more hands just pop up. So we're gonna keep moving down the list. People in the attendance, I do, I do see your hands, so if you would like to speak, please put it up. It does it in order of who does it first, so. Next is, oh, the person just left, Amy. Oh, okay, I'm gonna, I see your hand just pop back up. So Amy, I can't pronounce her last name, but if you could, please let us know your name and your residential address. We can hear you now.
Amy Yakobowski, 1544 Philadelphia Street. My question is, does this ordinance pertain to the entire borough or just the business district uptown? Because I'm trying to figure out if I have to wear a mask when I'm mowing my own yard.
This is a time for questions to be posed, and when we get to the section of the discussion tonight about the ordinance itself, Michael, if you could please make a note, we will follow up with that question during the discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then what about, what about people like, that are claustrophobic, and wearing the mask puts them into a severe anxiety attack? How is the borough gonna take into consideration the health reasons or psychological reasons that are protected by HIPAA law?
Again, if you, we will address that question at the time when we discuss the substance of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. That's all, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Moving down the list, then. First, UU, Indiana PA. If you could give the name of who is speaking and your street address, and then the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Mount. I'm the pastor at the First UU Church, and seems to be coming up, I can't actually change the name on that. But I live at 247 North Fourth Street here in Indiana. And I just wanted to speak in favor of this ordinance. I am excited to see the Indiana Borough being responsible and caring for the health of all of the people who live here. We have already seen scientifically that masks are something that work mostly if everyone wears them. Wearing a mask is not so much a protection of yourself as a protection of one another. And so as a pastor and as a person who cares about other people, it's my belief that having an ordinance, making sure that there is the ability for people in the borough to actually ask that one another wear masks and expect that that be respected, because it is a matter of law, that's going to protect all of us. If only people who are worried wear masks, it is not very protective, because it is a matter of caring for one another. And that's what government is for. That's what ordinances are for. They're the things that we use when we need a social system to do something that protects a community as a whole. And right now, coronavirus is something that is impacting communities and populations as a whole. It's not about individuals. It's not about what any one person wants or desires or has faith in for themselves. It's about us caring for one another. And so as people who care about one another, I want us to have an ordinance. I want us to have the ability to ask that people mask reliably, responsibly, and consistently. And so I really hope that this will pass. I hope that the borough will make it possible for us to protect all of Indiana. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving down the list, actually, and just to address, we did have one person in the Q and A, AP, you said you would like to speak. If you could raise your hand, then that'll put you in the queue. Perfect. I see your hand just went up there, so, thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Ken Arthurs. Let me just kind of do this stuff over here. And you should be good to go, Ken. If you can give us your name and your street address, go ahead.
Hey, Ken Arthurs, 560 Philadelphia Street, Indiana, Pennsylvania. I just bring in a couple issues. The, my main concerns is if this ordinance is gonna be ADA compliant, what about the immune compromise? We're gonna have to wear, the people who are immune compromised, they're gonna have to wear the Star of David on their jacket to say, hey, I'm immune compromised. I'm not required to wear a mask. The other consideration, I think, is the quality of masks. People are not wearing these masks properly. What kind of mask? The N95 mask? Or just something that Grandma Debbie went and put together from a material at Walmart? Because just because you have something wrapped around your face isn't equal a mask. So those are some things that the borough needs to take consideration. And it's gonna be detrimental to the businesses downtown. We're already at down 75% in sales, and only running at 25% capacity. It's impossible for us to survive any longer than we are. You're gonna have some, you're gonna have some empty storefronts when this is over. And this is, this couldn't put another nail in the coffin. I'm against wearing masks. I think for those who can, should, those who want to, should, but those who don't want to, they, it's kind of like smoking. Deal with the consequences. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Moving on. Next is T Palmer. If you could please give us your name and your street address, and your mic is muted at the moment.
Autumn, left hand of the screen.
Unfortunately, that's all. I can't, I can't unmute it for him, so.
So.
Can we just move on?
In the bottom left hand of the screen, the very far bottom left, there's a mute button. It's got a red line through it. You need to click it to take the red line off. Okay.
I guess we'll just move on, and T Palmer, if you'd like to speak, if you could raise your hand again. Okay, next is Jay Byron Fleck. We should be able to hear you. Actually, your mic is muted, but Mr. Fleck, if you could unmute, and then give us your name and your street address, and.
Yeah, my name Yeah, my name is Byron Fleck. I live at 2000 Washington Street, San Francisco, California. And I'm a resident, former resident of the county, and here's my point. Is that this ordinance should be a no-brainer. It's got a defect in Section 3 of the ordinance that we can address later about enforcement. But let me tell you why. There are some fallacies that have been, you know, suggested earlier. The first is, you know, from the Chamber of Commerce. Actually, the studies show that people who wear masks have more disposable income to shop, so they're more likely to come into Indiana and shop, okay? People who don't wear masks are not so likely, because they don't have the disposable income. And that, that's the first point. The second point is that every city, country, and it is doing this. You know, they're imposing this, and 50 bucks, it's not a big thing. Where I live, it's 500 bucks if you don't have a mask. But, so I just wanted to throw that out there. It's a very, very small inconvenience. There's one procedural problem, and it's good for business to do this. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna keep moving down. Next, we have Luke Summerfield. Luke, you should be unmuted. I mean, you should be able to speak, so if you want to unmute, if you could let us know your name and street address, and it's all you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luke Summerfield. I'm a resident of the borough at 450 Grant Street. I'm speaking out against this ordinance. Taking a look at the Department of Health's website and their current data, they're showing 154 cases in zip code 157. they're showing 154 cases in zip code 15701, which, as we all know, consists of not just the borough, but white township and several pieces of the surrounding townships. I basically would like to ask the question, how many of these cases are nursing home related? Do we know the answer to that question? And if that question is probably a lot, then I don't, I think that's a justification against moving forward with this ordinance. In addition, there are currently five COVID patients in the hospital. So our local healthcare system does not appear to be stressed at the moment. Two of which of those individuals unfortunately are on ventilators. So basically, I'm for voluntary compliance. I myself wear a mask at my employer, which is also downtown Indiana. I also wear a mask when I can't social distance. But to say that we're subject to a fine whenever we're walking back, walking on the street by ourselves is, I think, ridiculous. The other issue I see with this that has not been brought up in the comments today is the enforcement. Why is borough police not enforcing this ordinance if it is so important and so vital for the safety of our, of the borough residents? Why are we gonna hire part-time people to do this? And what kind of training will they receive in order to deal with somebody who they're trying to assess a fine? I really think the borough is setting themselves up for a lot of problems, a lot of negative PR, and just a lot of trouble. And that's why I'm against it. It's a bad idea. You do not see other municipalities and other cities and other boroughs in the state putting through this type of fine regime. So I ask Borough Council to please reconsider. And if you don't, I think a lot of people are gonna be running against you in 2021. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We have three more hands. Next is AP. AP, you are un, you are enabled to speak, you can give your name and your street address.
All right, thank you for your time. My name is Alexa Piacuaddio. I live at 939 Centennial Drive in Indiana, Pennsylvania. I have already sent an email to Michael Foot and Peter Broad about my concerns. I do want to say I understand you guys are in a really difficult position. So I just want to empathize with you guys there, I know you have a lot of opinions on both sides. But I do want to express that I do not support this motion, I do not think it should pass. And here is why. First off, I am not somebody that just runs with an opinion. I genuinely try to do as much research as I can. There was an article published on April 2nd, 2020 by Grant et al. in a peer-reviewed scientific journal about how vitamin D is very effective in slowing the spread and risk levels of COVID-19 for patients. So if that's the truth, then why aren't we mandating vitamin D supplementation in our residents? Also, an article by Compass et al. in the New England Journal of Medicine dated May 23rd, 2020 stated the ineffectiveness of masks in reducing the spread of all kinds of respiratory illnesses. There is also an article about different alternative medications, or well, not even medications, herbal remedies, things that everybody would have access to that are very inexpensive to reduce their risk of contracting and having complications from COVID-19, as well as another article dated May 11th by Patrick Wood about how face masking for healthy people can pose some serious risks. And I do think that this is an issue that, I understand people want to wear their mask if they feel concerned about the risk, and that should be great. But nobody should be fined for not wearing a mask. I just kind of feel like that, like other people have expressed, that's going to seriously affect local businesses. I know for myself, I have not shopped anywhere in Indiana County, and I have lived here for seven plus years. I, you know, I, I love Indiana County, I have not gone anywhere since this whole mandate happened because I don't feel like dealing with it. And I have now not given any of my money to any local business because it's too much of a hassle. And then you add that, that it's gonna be a fine for people when we're already an impoverished county. I just think it's a, you know, it's something that we should really be considering the ill effects of something like this and how difficult it's going to be to monitor and enforce. I also have a ton of other sources about how masks are ineffective and other alternative. I'm not denying that COVID-19 exists, but what I am saying is there are a bunch of other things we could be doing to slow its spread, giving resources to people, rather than having this authoritarian approach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Shot C. Shot C, you should be able to speak, if you can give us your name and your street address, and your microphone is muted at the moment.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Steve Shotz, I live at 239 South 14th Street. Lifelong resident here in Indiana County. And I really don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to voice my opinion that I think this ordinance is just asinine. It's something that's already in effect for the entire state. And to sit there and say that you want to make another ordinance on the local level is just redundant. And then you want to pay people that, as it was brought up earlier, what kind of training are they gonna have? You know, how are they gonna know how to handle a situation with someone who doesn't want to wear a mask and is not going to listen to them to, you know, write a citation? Like Ken said, our last time I recollect some, the government said we had to wear a piece of clothing was back in the 30s, 1930s, to wear a Jewish star on your shirt. Last time I remember, we're in America, we have the choice to wear what we want, you know, we have that freedom. And for you guys to sit there and say, no, you have to wear a mask? It's, you know, just a slap in the face. I mean, there's numbers out there that can go either way, depending on which, you know, news agency you want to believe as far as COVID numbers and deaths and all that kinds of stuff. And then we have this inaccuracy on which masks are good, which masks are safe, and which masks work and which masks don't. I mean, it's just, there's too much up in the air, there's too much unknown. And to tell me that if I walk out of my front door and cross the street to get in my truck to go to work, if someone's walking down the street and I don't have a mask on, and they stop me and want to tell me I owe them 50 bucks for that, I ain't gonna go for it. I will fight that all the way to court and as beyond if I have to. And I think a lot of people out there have the same mentality. So all you're gonna do is just open up a can of worms with a lot of people that are not going to go along with what you want to enact here. So I urge you, at the very least, the first guy to talk, he said, table it, get some more information, more data, info is king, you know? But if not, I would not go through with this because I really think you're gonna do more damage than help to our county and our borough.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next one then, we have Donna. Donna, we should be able to hear you, if you could give us your name and your street address, and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Donna Yabara. I live at 111 Shady Drive in Indiana PA, it's actually white township. I am a nurse, but I am against this ordinance. All those masks are ineffective unless it's an N95 mask. And all you're gonna do is ruin business in Indiana because I can tell you, if you pass that ordinance, I will refuse to shop downtown or Indiana borough. I did it when the governor not, you know, shut a lot of things down. I went to West Virginia to shop. And I will do the same thing here, you're gonna ruin businesses that are already hurting. It should be a choice, there are people with conditions like asthma, anxiety, that it's not proper for them to wear the mask, but thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you. That's actually, that was the last of the raised hands. If Michael would like to speak, if anyone sent letters or anything else, but that should be it for the public attendance on the call.
All right, well, for the, for the sake of the folks that are listening, I just want to reiterate that we did receive probably close to 20, maybe 25 emails, whether it was myself directly for probably the majority of them, or Kyle for a few of them. For those emails that came in where either there was not a name or address, we did request that. And so unfortunately, because we need a name and an address and for folks that wanted to remain anonymous, we won't be able to read their, their email. So I just wanted to say that at the beginning, so that folks would know if they are watching this recording or on this call, on the call currently, that we will be reading it if we didn't have your name and street address. The first email is from Margaret Buckley, 1321 Pine Vale Road, Marion Center. Although I have enjoyed and appreciated all that downtown Indiana has to offer for the past 30 years, I have not visited there for about five months. The reason is I'm avoiding Philadelphia Street like the plague because there is a plague. Unless and until Indiana is willing to enforce state mandates regarding the pandemic, particularly regarding masking, I will continue to stay away, sincerely, Peggy Buckley. Next email is from Martha Buckley, she is from 1317 Pine Vale Road, Marion Center PA. Members of Borough Council, since the pandemic began, I have protected myself by staying home and only going out rarely and only for essentials. On my forays into town, I have been appalled by the cavalier attitude of many people to wearing masks over their mouths and noses. That people would not follow a simple, common sense, public health measure that is supposed to be mandatory and that the authorities in Indiana would not enforce such a mandate is entirely unacceptable. Until such a time as public health measures are enforced, I will remain at home and keep my money with me. I note the objections to proper mask-wearing or any mask-wearing at all fall into three broad categories. As a public service, I list below the objections and suggest the responses to them that the authorities in Indiana can use as necessary. Objection, it violates my constitutional rights. Response, no it doesn't. The preamble to the Constitution states that one of the purposes of it having been written in the first place is to promote the general welfare. Wearing a mask to prevent the spread of a deadly disease comes squarely under the heading of promoting the general welfare. Here's a ticket for not wearing a mask properly. Objection, I have a medical condition, I can't wear a mask. If you are too delicate to wear a mask, you are too delicate to be out and about in, in a pandemic. You can have your groceries and other essentials delivered to you. Here is a ticket for not wearing a mask properly. Objection, I don't think they work. Response, you are not an epidemiologist, so your opinion on the subject doesn't matter. You have no more right to make someone else sick than they have to make you sick. Here is a ticket for not wearing a mask properly. A week of media interviews told that people know the mask mandate will in fact be enforced. And why should lessen the surprise of tickets being given out now when they weren't before? Sincerely, Martha Buckley. This individual wanted to remain anonymous. This email is from Franklin Eckenroad, 49 East Campbell Street, Blairsville. Dear Sirs Borough Council, as a resident of the borough of Blairsville, Indiana County PA and ninth generation, dirt generation Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania which many consider the cradle of liberty. I must speak to that liberty which is the foundation of greatness. There is no diversity without liberty, and without liberty, there can be no mutually agreed upon unity. Governance without liberty, for the governed is tyranny. Our word of God opposes oppression from government and requires us to stand against it by word indeed. So I must speak up at this time and strongly object to your new ordinance requiring everyone to wear face coverings. I'm a resident of Blairsville, but a member of First Baptist Church, Indiana. For some with pre-existing conditions and who are in need, your mandate of universal coverings is too great a burden. I personally have several allergies at times and cannot breathe well. For many, it causes undue stress and hardship. This is a hindrance to the free worship of one true God. Government, governance from a place of fear is not good governance. It's not good for those governing the governed or the prosperity of our society and churches. Sincerely, Franklin Eckenroad. No address. This is an email, actually, I believe this was a message, a message and a Facebook message from Melinda Filcoski, 4870 Lucerne Road, Indiana. We do not agree nor hold your plan to support Wolf's agenda of forcing masks-wearing, forcing masks-wearing on the public. This is a violation of the Constitution and you need not assist the process. Furthermore, science shows a greater risk for those wearing masks all the time as any, as nobody wants, Plurisy kindly reconsider your position. Once again, no address. This is from a Mr., I believe, Jazz Fleming, 143 Stormer Road, Indiana. Very disappointing, Indiana, in no way does my household support this, you're out of your minds. This is from a Jessica Gallagher, 544 Clark Street, Indiana. After listening to the radio this morning, I felt the need to email and express my concern over passing this mask burdens. I read the entire proposed ordinance. I am all in favor of masks when in public and I cannot social distance as per recommendations. However, it is a recommendation and the idea that you now want to police enforce the issue is absolutely wrong. I live in the borough and love walking uptown for dinner and to shop with family and friends. However, if this is passed, we will be more than happy to visit white township and other local towns to do our business. Please stop hurting Indiana borough, this will not help a very concerned citizen. Jessica Gallagher. This individual did not provide an address. This is from Terry Meckley, 1539 Valley Road, Cherry Tree, PA. To whom it may concern, this mask mandate is going too far. A healthy person shouldn't be wearing masks, especially outside. How are you going to enforce this? Don't we have bigger issues that need your attention right now? Have any, have any idea on how to fix the drug problem in this county? How exactly are you going to enforce this nonsense? What about the folks that have medical conditions which mask-wearing is more deadly than non-mask-wearing? Are you going to find those folks? Well, if that's your plan, I hope you have a good attorney on retainer. People won't stand by and allow this nonsense. Stay in your lane, sincerely, Terry Meckley. Know that one of the council members received a letter, but I did not receive a home address for that individual. See, this is from Talon, Talon Myers, 10 Rodeo, Rodeo Dendrum Street, Starford, PA. I'm not an Indiana resident, but I go borough business regularly. If the new ordinance is passed, I will not be doing any business in the borough and likely not in white township. I have health reasons that make mask-wearing unhealthy for me, thank you, Talon Myers. This individual spoke previously. This is from Steve Rogerson, 16 Susan Drive, Indiana. Dear Borough Council, it's simple really, wearing masks save lives. And although there are some headwinds you have to overcome in this messaging, it's important to rely on science and make the right decisions for safety of all residents, visitors and workers in our area. Especially, especially important as the local population swells with the welcome return of IUP. with the welcome return of IUP students. Plenty of data and anecdotal evidence in this article. He gives a URL. It's important to remind everyone affected by the ordinance that it's not a political issue as evidenced by the bipartisan support for wearing face masks. I hope the meeting stays civil and goes well on Tuesday. All the best, Steve Rogerson. I have a an email from Judah Thomas, twenty South Fourteenth Street, Indiana. Respected council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you all briefly on the ordinance being proposed. My name is Judah Thomas and I pastor a church within the borough and also reside here. While I understand the rationale for considering such a step as a faith leader in this borough who engages on various levels with businesses, owners and residences residents within the borough, I have a couple of thoughts that I hope will prove helpful in your deliberations on this matter. For the most part, our community has moved past the second spike. We saw run our COVID case numbers up for a couple of weeks. While that does not promise a permanent subsidence of cases, it gives the council time to put in place good education efforts which are clearly visible and engaging the public. Engaged public and business community will enable a clear, let's take care of our Indiana vibe. I would be I would be happy to assist in such an effort. This is currently not the sentiment in the community. It feels like the top measure too many upcoming contact with. Our political climate is extremely fragile at the moment in trust in leadership at any level, including my area of influence is met with a measure of skepticism. We understand that it that is part of the job. But it also means we look to lower tensions wherever possible without undermining the greater good. So I would suggest tabling this matter till we see the general response of incoming students and residents to fall opening up of IUP and the uptick of moving people. So far, all the moving in and increased business activity seems to be progressing without too much hassle or non-compliance. Since the draft is in place, I think the work of drawing up an ordinance is already halfway there. I would lean into IUP efforts to communicate healthy practices first rather than pull the trigger before they have had any chance to implement their policies. If necessary at all, I think post-liberty is a good target date for more strict measures if if the community doesn't make a turnaround. I hope that my words are seen as helpful to the conversation you are currently having. I will endeavor to educate and support our community in whatever way I can to avoid unnecessary unrest at this time. I can be reached anytime at he provides his email address. If I can be of any assistance to the community, thanks again for the opportunity to address you all respectfully Judah Thomas. This is from Mr. Jeff Whittison, seven, seven, one, seven Philadelphia Street, Indiana. Indiana Borough Council Representatives. As an owner of one, one of Indiana's longest standing businesses, I feel the need to express my grave concerns about the effects your council is having on the downtown Indiana business district. The announcement of the pending mask ordinance has stirred up a wave of negative public attitude towards shopping downtown Indiana. Our community is already severely suffering from the effects of the coronavirus as it is. We have lost months of business. We have limitations on our occupancies and we have the constant fear of the collapse of all businesses in downtown Indiana. Right now, hundreds on social media are commenting to News Talk eleven sixty WCCS's Facebook page how they will no longer be shopping downtown Indiana because of your proposed mask ordinance. Our business, our businesses invest tens of thousands to advertise the benefits of shopping downtown Indiana on this very radio station tonight. Your proposal undermines all our efforts. Your mask ordinance and its current perception puts many Indiana businesses at risk. Heavy-handed civil penalties will not only act to drive people away but divide an already polarized community. Is that your intentions? I don't think so. Everyone is on edge dealing with the new normal. Consider this before you act on this ordinance. Yes, there are people who feel the masks are not effective and there are there is those who want all precautions possible. Instead of chastising people, let's educate, inform and provide them a reason to help all of us get through this safely. I want to recognizing commend council members like Gerald Smith for efforts to inform and encourage city practices in our community through social media. I believe a positive and inclusive approach will better serve us. There are many intelligent and creative members of our community that if asked would gladly help. The business, the businesses of downtown Indiana are doing everything in our abilities to protect our customers. We know how important our community's help is. We will appreciate your efforts to help us develop safe community behaviors. We will work more effectively together than opposed. We need your help. Give us safe practices and guidelines so we can teach them to our customers. Let's create community awareness to the benefits of safe practices. Let's make it compelling to protect each other's health more than mandated. Together Indiana works better than apart. Thank you for your time, Jeff Whittison. And the final one, there is no straight address, Mr. President. That's all I have for the written public comment.
Thank you. Okay. We are now going to move on to the business. Rest of the business that's before us tonight. First, we hear from the administration committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on July twenty eighth through a Zoom meeting, of course. In terms of our deliberations, we began with the report from the parking coordinator who gave us gave us the six-month mid-year review, the parking fund. And things were better than I expected them to be. But then we're able to by reducing the number of hours, the expenses for the reducing the number of hours for the staff of the parking, they're able to reduce some of their expenses. We had a presentation about the CDBGCV block grants and how that money is being, how we would choose to spend that money within the context of the pandemic. And we did have some discussions about how we might be able to diversify that spending just a little bit. We had a brief presentation from the borough manager relative to the workers' compensation insurance and how after the manager's death moves during his tenure here, we've been able to save something to the effect of forty thousand dollars a year and in reducing our workers' compensation insurance expense. We had a little bit of the report on reviewing the June financials and how the current climate has affected our finances and how that might shape some future decisions. That's almost was all rather tentative. But I do have a an action item. If you give me a moment to get to possibly two. In my, the first action item, here we go. And it relates to a one point nine million dollar loan from the borough to the parking authority that was done many, many years ago. And it has distorted accounting, both our accounting and the parking's accounting. That money is not recoverable. And all it does is it complicates the way that accounting is done both for the borough and for the parking authority and kind of makes more complicated decisions in the future. So my motion is to move to authorize the borough manager to write off the one point nine million parking department loan owed to the general fund and to fully eliminate the asset from the general fund balance sheet.
Is there a second? Second, committee.
That's the only part of Robert's rules that I know, so I I think this is discussion done.
This is simply a way of cleaning up the books.
Yes.
It doesn't change anything in terms of how much money we have or don't have.
No. Well, all it does is that it actually permits our books to give us a clearer account of account of what we have and what we don't have. Because what it does is it makes it look like we always have two million dollars in the budget more than we have. This is not a real asset. This is not recoverable. And it also potentially complicates choices being made by the parking authority itself. So I, this comes from the committee and I really as the committee chair, I speak forcefully in favor of this move.
There is a quirk that always shows accounts receivable as an asset, whether they can be received or not. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye or raising opposed name. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And to clarify, Mr. Manager, you want me to do our action item number two?
I'm wondering if we should hold off on that maybe for the for a better discussion once we've completed the rest of our business would.
I understand. I'm just curious what committee you want that coming from.
Did that come under old business?
Let's do that.
Business.
Yeah, so that is the that is the report from the administration committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for the administration committee? Seeing none, moving on. Was there something? No. Community development, Ben.
Good evening. So in your packets, you have our minutes from the June meeting, which were not available last month and there will be a minutes from the July meeting because we didn't have quorum in July. You also in the supplemental documents, you've got the code and planning reports. So those are there for your review. A couple of things just to add to what we we have here. Just as usual, downtown Indiana, the organization is crazy. The shop local event was a success. There's craft beer week coming up, the wine walk coming up and ladies day out coming up as well as it's a wonderful life festival. Different this year, obviously, but there will be a tree and those kind of things. And Linda Mitchell did a great service to the borough by going door to door, deliver the Together Indiana posters earlier this week. In terms of getting some more of the good news, several of the blighted properties that are in town have been purchased. One is going to be demolished and the rest it looks like will be renovated. So we're we're seeing some improvement there in downtown or not downtown, but throughout the borough. Less good news, the the parsonage for the Lutheran church will likely be demolished. So that'll that'll be a it's a loss to our sort of built environment. The changing gears slightly, we really, really need two more people on the zoning hearing board. So if you know anybody who has any interest or ability or skills or would like to learn about zoning, we need them to, we need, we need to hear from them. So please reach out to them and then contact me or Otto and we'll give them an application. And the reason this is important is because if something comes up for variance, if we don't have enough people to form quorum for the board, we can't hear that variance and we can't decide to approve or disprove that disprove that variance, which means that in some cases rental property owners, owners of businesses they run out are stuck in limbo, not making any money on their properties while we wait to bureaucratically sort ourselves out. So again, if you got anybody, please beat the bushes on this one. We absolutely need two new members for the zoning hearing board. And the last thing I wanted to just mention briefly here, and I forwarded to council the PowerPoint slides this afternoon. But the 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 county CEO, so the chamber and the commissioners and the and the Tourism Bureau, that that or those sort of organizations is embarking on an agreement with a group called Qualaris for something that's probably going to be called, it's a middle of the lines of Indiana County Safe or something along those lines. But what it is, is a basically it's a third party that they're going to contract with to provide education and certification to businesses, right? So retail, but also all businesses in the in the county. And the idea of this is is that it's a it's a positive kind of thing where you that the cost is going to be covered by the county. So any business who would like to join can join. And just by joining you, you go through sort of the certification process and then from there you can get additional badges of various types. And what it what it is, a way for for businesses to educate themselves and begin to educate their their customers and be able to then display that they are their safety consciousness. So it's a it's it's a it's very much sort of a carrot based approach to 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 begin trying to deal with COVID nineteen safety for the various businesses. And so we're, you know, we as a borough are being offered the opportunity to to be a partner on this, to join in. At at this point, no cost. And and you to basically try and our partnership aspect would be to be sort of ambassadors for this. And so as you know, staff is out interacting with businesses to be talking to them about this, this, this program that they can sign up for. It takes about fifteen minutes to sign up. You do it from your phone kind of thing. And and you know, through the Together Indiana campaign, this would be something that, you know, as we're out sort of being the bushes for that, trying to increase education. This would be something that we could also be talking to to businesses about. And so there's no cost to it and submit it. I'm I'm hoping that Indiana Borough Council can support this and so that Indiana Borough can become a partner on this and sort of continue to improve the downtown area and actually the entire track community. Any questions?
Are you making a motion to that effect?
Does it? I don't need a motion. I don't I don't know what the
If you want, if you want support for the council, we we have, we can express our support. I know it's my voting.
So I I move that Indiana Borough be partner with the the county partners to support the Qualaris education project.
Right. Since this is not something that the committee voted on, is it? I think we
No, we discussed it and but they didn't vote on it, no.
Okay, so we need a second. Is there any discussion?
And I was kind of wondering, how similar is it and how well it how similar or different is it than Together Indiana? Is it just something that'll work well with Together Indiana?
Yeah, now I see this. So Together Indiana, as I understand from looking at the websites and reading the posters is educational, right? It's it's sort of a various pieces of information being put out there for public consumption. This would be a I guess a little bit, little bit, little bit more in the weeds in that you would, you're not just consuming and reading it, then you would be, you'd have as a business owner, you would be agreeing to or or going through trainings or, you know, there's a component of it of sort of like a secret shopper component where, you know, they often hire students at the local university to go in and take some notes and it's never done like a in sort of a Yelp kind of way where there's a review. It's always been between Qualaris and the 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 business about here's, here's places where you can improve. And so this because it's being done through a third party and that and that Qualaris is a company that's been around for a while and they were initially in the sort of safety, they still are still in the safety business for hospitals. And so this is, I see this as being very, very sort of working very, very nicely with Together Indiana as as a way to 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 actually have some some product come out of it in addition to education.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the borough participating in this program signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Is there anything else?
Nope, that's it for us.
Are there any questions for community development?
I, I had a question. Looking, Ben, at the minutes from June, I'm very concerned that at, at that point, the borough is at approximately a 46% response for the 2020 census. And that's pretty terrible. And I was hoping that maybe things have improved by this time. And if they haven't improved, is there anything that we as a borough can possibly do to encourage people to fill out those census forms and get them in? Because having accurate census numbers is going to affect so many grant opportunities and so many other factors that we have to deal with for the next 10 years.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Stephanie if she has the most up-to-date numbers for that. We talked about last night that the, the deadline has been moved to September 30th. But Stephanie, if you have the numbers in front of you, if you wouldn't mind rattling them off. And if not, I apologize for putting you on the spot.
I think Stephanie has left. Is that true? I can give you a little update, Sarah. The numbers are currently in the low to mid 60%, low, low to mid 60s for the, for the county and the borough. There is a latest push to work with the landlords and, and leasing documents. COVID-19, sending students home and then extending, the new, the enumerators went out late. The students who rent are no longer in their original spots. Can you see what position, what quandary that puts us in? So the, the Census Bureau had extended the date till the end of October and then have since in the last seven days moved it up to, back to the end of September. And the complete count committee is now working on a 30-day plan to, well, a 30-day plan essentially, to work with landlords to get a more accurate count. Because again, enumerators went out late and our students have all moved and it's a little, it's a, many college towns are facing this issue right now.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thanks, Betsy.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any thing else for community development? Seeing none. Public safety.
Okay, we met on Thursday, July 16th. Let's see. Chief did give us a state of the department. We had talked about it. We're down two officers, one out due to injury, another due to illness. And we did talk about the diversity inclusion group with Dr. Albert, Albert Adams. Both Dr. Albert, I hope, Counselor G. Smith and the chief will be meeting with the Indiana Gazette newspaper to discuss the training that the department has been undergoing the last two years. And, and they will also be covering what the police department is already doing that many of the current, they, police department is ahead of the curve with a lot of, a lot of training and dealing with biases and prejudices and things like that. In progress, we have a grant funding award of $45,845 from the Corona emergency, coronavirus urgency supplemental funding. The money's been used for vehicle and building decontamination and personal protective equipment. We had a, the noise ordinance, local enforcement request from Shane Kaler, owner of Boomerang, owner of Boomerang Bar, requested a letter be sent by the liquor, to the liquor control enforcement agency regarding noise complaint investigation at local bars. The L C will not issue citations for noise from bars if the borough sends a request for the L C to stop. And in, in, in that request, the police would then issue the citations. Part of the problem we discussed with Mr. Kaler was the fact that when the L C does issue a, a, a noise violation, it's anywhere from a month to two months before they get that notification of that violation. Having the borough police do it, it would happen immediately and there would be a chance to sort of remedy the situation before it happens. And that's just the noise up, up on Philadelphia Street at the different restaurants and bars. There is also a partnership opportunity, the counselor, Dr. Ford helped set it up. Chief and I have already met with the two doctors, professors at the IUP Center for Researchology. The chief is going to be in the, in the department to, to, to work with them, to provide statistics for, and data for research. It's a, it's a win-win for both of us. The police department can have some areas researched and data being created that would help the department decide on how they're going to run different things. And the, the data will also help the Center for Research in Criminology by giving them a chance to gather data to use in their research and in papers. Let's see, we did a mid-year review on August 4th. This Thursday, the police department will prevent, do a presentation of their activities past, current, and future at Thursday's Public Safety Committee meeting at 7 o'clock. Let's see, I think we did talk about this the last time in Borough, the Borough Work Session. But the recruitment and the civil service hiring process was discussed at our meeting. The department had advertised in over 40 places and tried to get a more diverse group. After all the applications were put in, we have five applicants that have made it through the entire testing process. And they are ranked and they are available if and when we need to hire within the next year. Let's see. Not much happening in special events because so many things have been canceled. In new business, we did the crosswalk location assessments and bicycle safety, public service announcements. The work on those are in progress. And if there's anything worth, noteworthy there, I know the chief could, could let us know about that. And in the discussion also at our meeting, Sarah Stewart wanted to know if it'd be possible to create a short-term permit to cover such events as timely protests and gatherings. Gerald Smith and Poot Taylor also expressed an interest in looking into such a permit. And I know I did hear from Counselor Dr. Ford also about the possibility of having something where we could have a, a quick way to, to, to get a permit so people could do some things in, in town and, and businesses could apply to say shut down one of the, like Carpenter Avenue, North or South Carpenter Avenue, to, to provide some space, outdoor space for socialization and for, to help with the businesses in town during the, the pandemic. And that was it.
Are there any questions for public safety? Seeing none. Moving on. Betsy, is there anything from Shade Tree?
We did finally have our monthly meeting. Two or three northward, north, sorry, note worthy items. And I'm sorry, I'm a, a little, I'm going to look a little bit at my notes, so just give me one minute. We talked about a tree registry and updating the tree registry for the plantings throughout the borough. We talked about fall planting. And then we, I'd like to note that we received a significant monetary gift from Faye Bradwick and Don Lancaster to support some, to support, what I will say is an incredible amount, incredible amount of plantings in the borough over the course of three, of the upcoming three years. And we are very grateful for that. And that was talked about as I mean, at our meeting as well.
Are there questions for Shade Tree?
Peter, I think Public Works probably should speak.
I, how did I skip Public Works? I don't know. Thank you. What would I do without you, Sean?
Oh, my goodness, Shade Tree went first.
Yes, of that. All right, John, sorry. I didn't mean to miss you in any way.
I won't take it personally. I swear. It's been a rough day, but it's all right. So we met, you can see the minutes there. Some of these things we did talk about. We, we did award the bids for the South 5th and South 13th sewer, street sewer replacement projects. If, if you take a look there, you know, there's, there's a lot of work happening around the borough. A lot of those projects that you see here listed are moving. Our paving, paving has started as well. The gas company is in doing a lot of work as well. So our, and of course, the, the big PennDOT projects on Philly are, they're seemingly, they're, they're, they're going on as well. So there's, there's a lot of work happening. I always want to remind council about, that there is, regardless of what we're, we're sort of doing, the, the amount of work that the Public Works Committee is doing and contracting through is really, it's really pretty staggering and they do, they do an amazing job. One of the things that we tried to prioritize with our paving is our pedestrian crosswalks. I don't know if you saw today, our, our pedestrian crosswalks in many, many places across the borough are freshly painted, particularly in a lot of those places where there's a lot of traffic. And I think we've seen, we've seen a lot of people during this pandemic out on the streets. I'm going to move right along. There is an action item here. I guess, taking this a little bit backwards. But the, one, some of the work that is going to be happening from the gas company, and this was mentioned, the agenda prep, is to, for the, the gas company is going to be relocating their gas service land and borough property. And I believe we did get solicited for that. So it's really just a right of way. It's going to allow them to do horizontal directional drilling underneath the lot. We just need to grant them the right of way. So I believe this already came out of committee. So if I can move to authorize Borough Manager to execute the gas service line easement and related documents.
Is there discussion? Everybody understand what we're voting on here? Okay. See no discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed name? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Our wastewater treatment plant continues to operate really well. We are, I don't know if folks have seen, we've had the waste, the COVID wastewater testing moving. We, we've had some updates and I, that's a helpful way that I think grows responding to the COVID pandemic is to be able to provide some additional data. It's not very, like I said before, it's not very, I guess, a precise data, but it is turning out to be relatively accurate. I think last week, we noted a decrease in COVID evidence in our wastewater. And indeed, over the last week, we have seen fortunately a decrease in actual COVID cases. There's still a lot of, I think, analysis before we can really talk about that correlation. I know that this project is still being, I know Michael is working with IRMC, sorry, IUP in particular, to sort of bolster that project. But it is what we're thinking about for our CBD G C V funds. So I'm going to move on to the next question, which is to move to approve the resolution to execute cooperation agreement with Indiana County for that application to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for Community Development Block Grant Funding for COVID-19 programs. I don't think we voted on this on committee, so I might need a second.
Is there a second?
Sure.
I think I heard Sean get there first. Is there discussion?
Yeah, on the, on the CDBG program, I understand the program I touted was declared ineligible by the county. I feel bad about that. And my understanding was a certain amount of that money was still either being set aside for contribution to food bank or, or possibly being set aside. Michael, maybe you can clear that up for me a little bit? Are we committing the entire amount of the money to the, to the wastewater project? Or are we reserving some?
No, we're going to be putting some monies aside for, actually, what I found out this afternoon will be two other projects. We, we certainly are looking at our wastewater surveillance program. But also, we did earmark monies for a local food bank. If we did receive requests from a local food bank for assistance, we would have some money set aside for them. I was also informed by Luanne Zach this afternoon that in fact, the, the food delivery program can be funded. And so we, we, on behalf of council, I gave her approval to allow the borough to contribute to that, should we be asked.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions on this motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed name? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. So I, I encourage folks to read through the minutes. There's, there's always quite a bit that's happening. The last, last couple pieces, I just wanted to be sure to report out. There is a joint sewer committee meeting. We have a, we have quarterly joint sewer committee meetings with White Township. We share wastewater treatment plan and so that we try to coordinate on those things. So that's scheduled for September 15th at 6:00 PM. And then the last part, the new business is really thinking about the goal setting and the 2021 budget. I encourage folks to take a look at that. We, we were asked by the manager to provide some input on what our priorities were and what we want to be thinking about for remainder of this year and next year. So you can see some of the discussion items that were there. Included some of the maintenance on borough properties such as municipal building, H Street parking lot, Vinegar Hill. One of the ideas there that came out was to try and engage the community within our, I think, our, the Indiana Garden Club. And maybe see if we can help that organization. They, they do, they manage a number of public properties around. And we, you know, we are, particularly this summer with our reduced staff and the pandemic, we have, we're low on manpower or work power in order to maintain some of these things. So we are hoping that we can reach out to the Indiana Garden Club and help us with that a little bit and even, maybe even help them grow. We've had some priorities about maintaining facilities and operations. Obviously, there's a lot of things, like I said, that Public Works does that just needs to be, needs to continue to happen. And so we need to make sure we're continuing to keep the borough running, streets paved and stuff flowing underneath. And also improving our parks. We talked quite a bit about, sorry, McGregor Park. And, you know, there's a fence that's around there that maybe needed to be updated or just removed at some point. And talked a little bit about making sure that we move forward with the, our corrective action plan we have on our sewers. Like I mentioned before, it's thinking about walk-friendly streets and continuing on our, our stormwater education project. I think last year we had, I mean, Kyle put together the, the water barrel workshop that was, I think, really successful in terms of helping educate our community about stormwater. And so we can think about what's kind of the next step. I realize we're obviously low on, again, work power. But nonetheless, these are things that we want to continue to communicate with the public. So that was our meeting. Less, for anything, I think those are only two motions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Public Works? No? Then since we already got out of order and did Shade Tree, move on to the manager's report. Michael?
Mr. President, as much as I'd like to speak, would you like to do your discussion about the ordinance? Or would you like to say that? Or would you like to say that for the very end?
Well, I had thought we could do it under unfinished business.
Oh, unfinished, okay. I just want to make sure that I was going to be speaking out of turn. My, my report, Mr. President, is very, very brief. As you all know, Together Indiana launched last week. I did provide you the links for the various, for our microsite and our social media pages. The playbooks have been distributed to all the managers in terms of our internal planning for, in preparation for any sort of COVID event. And Kyle, I'm going to give the honor to you once more, if you'd like to announce to council about RACP.
Yeah, not, not much to say other than last time, but it's done. It will be paid next month, eight hundred thousand something as a reimbursement. So we got that all taken care of and we'll have an audit in six months. And I think we're well prepared to close it out and everything's done. So on to more grants. Thank you.
Find us some more.
And that's all that happens, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions for the manager?
This might be jumping the gun a little bit in our discussion later, but for our, first of all, I really appreciate the Together Indiana campaign. I think it's fantastic. I hope people can go to TogetherIndiana.com and sign up to say you're going to support us working together. I think it's exactly the kind of public information campaign that we were looking for. I'm, I'm wondering if, how, I guess, how flexible that campaign is and if we would be able to indeed, you know, add to that, add to those messagings? Or is it the plan already to add to those messagings, ordinances that we passed regarding COVID? Like, like the one about the mask or that ends up being changed? Can we, can we add that into that plan?
There is, there is the opportunity to, to add. And that's something that we're, staff is reviewing with tryout to see how that can be accomplished. We have at a staff level started putting an FAQ page together or information together. We're working on that in preparation. So yes, there are things that can be incorporated.
Are there other questions for the manager? Chief?
President, thank you. My report is also brief. On August 4th, I gave a comprehensive mid-year review of police department activity. If there are any questions stemming from that presentation, I would be happy to answer. Other than that, we're very much business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the chief? No? Ben? I'm solicitor.
Good evening, everybody. I have two points that I wanted to bring up for your consideration before we go to the ordinance when I can also assist with some information regarding that process. First is there is an, there is a resolution on file for order, the order of business. It's the resolution that sets the three-minute time limit, et cetera. And there is an abridged Roberts Rules of Order part of that. And so what I'm asking, Michael, if you could find that resolution, I would like to make sure that it gets circulated to council for consideration. And maybe we can update some of the Roberts Rules of Order issues. And that's mostly a placeholder because every single time I forget to mention that. Second, I want to say something to you guys and to the public, just so we're clear. I, I thought the public participation worked beautifully. It was great and, and I think adds to the dialogue about the issue. But the comment and chat part, I think it's called Q and A or chat. After the public participation section closes, people are no longer allowed to have a running dialogue or chat. And the reason for that is, is that we by law are required to track public participation. If we were in a public meeting, as you know, people would sign up and speak and sit down. And they don't just speak out randomly during the meeting. If they do, there, there's a call to order. But, so we're not tracking this chatting and stuff that's happening. So that's why there's no more chatting and Q and A after that window of public participation closes. Because we're trying to follow the Sunshine Act and also mimic how it would be in a public meeting as much as possible. And this venue allows that chat to keep going. So there's a question being posed, what happened to the chat? And I'm answering that question. When public participation closes, that stops. And so to the extent there are additional questions, they can either take place at a subsequent meeting or they can go through the manager's office to get additional information. And other than that, I will reserve any other comments until you get to the consideration of the ordinance.
Is there any questions for the solicitor? See none. Okay. I have a very short report. Since our last meeting, thanks largely to the persistence of Michael Foot and Gerald Smith, the borough has begun to have a seat at the table in climbing groups for the current crisis. IAC, which is the only group I've been part of, does not seem to be working as a vehicle for dealing with things. We're going to have to rely on ourselves and whatever we can work with the county and others. We're already getting reports of sizable groups of incoming students gathering without masks and without social distancing. We've all read or heard about what has happened at other universities. We can keep our fingers crossed that it doesn't happen here, but we should be prepared for outbreaks of infection. Please stay safe. Remember, we're all in this together. Look out for one another. Okay. Mr. Mayor, is the mayor still with us? I see the phone number there. We seem to have lost the mayor. All right, now we're moving on to unfinished business, which is consideration of the proposed ordinance. I assume we all received an updated version of it. Is that true, Niva? Does that go to everyone in the council?
Yeah. Yes, but if I might suggest, Mr. President, if we could focus on the facial covering ordinance to start, because that's the one that was advertised and that really doesn't change in the amended version. I think it'll just make it a little bit easier. And then I have a suggestion about if it's the will of council to pass the ordinance, I have a suggestion about how that process would work. So if we can focus on the original version first and then the updated version. And whenever you want, I can respond to some of the outstanding questions whenever, you know, if you'd like me to do that.
Thank you. All right. Is there discussion of the facial covering? Right. As we all know, this is simply adding enforcement to the already existing state law. I noticed during the public discussion, there are a number of misconceptions. You can mow your lawn without a mask on. Nobody's going to come into your house looking to see whether you're wearing a mask or not. You're playing with your children in the yard. You don't need to wear a mask. It's only when you're in public and you cannot maintain social distancing. Those two things. So you can be walking down the sidewalk without a mask and that's fine, unless there's a group of people there that you can't avoid. So other than that, are there, is there other discussion of this portion of the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, and you knew you were gonna, you knew you were gonna hear from me because
Yes.
you've all gotten a couple of letters, emails from me during the week. And because we're all pals, I'm sure you read those with great intent. Look, I, my objections, my, my objections, I guess, to passing something tonight or even soon are certainly not ideological. I'm no anti-masker at all. I, I utilize a mask. I have members of the family that are in the healthcare industry. I know very well the benefits of wearing a mask. The problems, and you might remember them, or you may not, but generally, the problems I had with the original ordinance were mostly technical and frankly administrative. But the reason I think those occurred, because I think in the second, in the, in the first rewrite, for example, one of those things had been changed, as I could have suggested, in, in part. Is, is that I think we did that too fast. Fast work is often sloppy work. And I, I've said it before, and this is just a question of how we do our business. Niva is a fantastic attorney. She's, she's probably the best ever. But she was assigned, I guess, to create something very quickly without a whole lot of conversations among the, among the council. And, and I think that happened again on the second rewrite. So I am, I don't share the sense of urgency in that this has to be passed with, with immediacy. I'm aware of the, the dangers of the pandemic. I'm aware that we, we have cases right here in Indiana County, more than we ever did. If we want compliance on, on what we consider to be good behavior, the question might be, do we get that compliance through positive reinforcement or, or through punitive reinforcement? And I think, I honestly believe that we owe it to the community to, to try the former. Which, by the way, several of you on council and on staff have done some really great work on positive messaging through Together Indiana and in other efforts. I'm suggesting that we pause this ordinance. I think an ordinance, a prohibitive ordinance should be the, the action, the last straw action, if you will. The, the action of last resort. And I think that should always be the case in government action. So a couple, a couple people in particular come to mind. The businessman, Mr. Whitson, the, the pastor, I can't remember his name. Both wrote very well-thought-out letters to us suggesting that they would assist as members of the community and, and help in furthering our community messaging in, in order to provide compliance and the kind of behavior, public behavior that we all desire. It, it's really as simple as that. I, I do have some, some technical administrative concerns. You already have them in your hand or maybe in the wastebasket. I don't know what you do with my emails, but I would ask, we take a pause. I would ask that, that we work perhaps on a, an ordinance. Because if I'm wrong and we can't accomplish this through, through positive promotion, okay, then I was wrong and then we need to, we need to go the other way. But I would request that we not approve an ordinance, punitive ordinance this evening.
Sean?
And I also.
I'd like to know Sean first.
Thank you, Jim. My concern is that the speed with which we do business is potentially slower than the speed of the virus. And that when we say, well, we got it wrong, you're just not wrong. There are bodies, right? So I, and I completely understand the comparison of the punitive versus the positive. If you recall, when we discussed this last month, my idea, my support for this was not as the only tool in the toolbox, but rather to have that tool potentially as a last resort, right? But if we have to wait a full month before we revisit this question, right? It's potentially too late. And my thinking is the way that our police force enforces, for example, our noise ordinances. I live right in the borough and I have student houses around me. And there are parties there. In fact, there will be parties there next week, right? When they roll up, because there's been a complaint, this is, this is, I mean, I may be guessing and the chief can correct me on this, but it's been my experience that they roll up and say, there's been a complaint. If we have to come back, there will be sanctions because it is not their intent to find people. It's their intent to just see that the noise ordinances are observed, right? That the strategy of, of our code enforcement, the strategy of our police enforcement has been just to keep people safe, right? I, I don't want to give them a tool because what you saw in the chat was that there, there is already this, this bugaboo of like crusades of people being picked up off the street because they're working. No, that's not how enforcement, there are parts of our code that have not been enforced. We, if you recall, there was a question about nuisance properties, right? So I'm, I'm, I wanted to, this is my position, because I would like it to be available, not for what the situation we are in today, but the situation that we might find ourselves in three weeks. Because it's not unreasonable to imagine that things could be potentially significantly worse in three weeks. I mean, I, I, God forbid, I don't want that to happen. But I think there is decent evidence around us within the, within the, within the country that shows that that's a possibility. But that I, that as we always do, we leave the enforcement to the people who have that authority, right? And they make wise decisions on how it's handled. Anyway, that's my position, but I'm very grateful for your, for your comments. And I understand that this is not an easy issue for any of us because it's
I respect that greatly, Sean. And, but, but a couple of things, if, and I hate to do this, but if we can bring Chief into the conversation, and Peter had mentioned that the ordinance does little more, I don't, he meant this precisely, but in large part, a large part of the proposed ordinance is simply what's already been a state directive, right? To the Department of Health. Can we ask Chief Shaw if, if they are already empowered to enforce those provisions?
Justin?
Sir, so there has been guidance issued from the state and from the governor's office. The guidance has relied heavily on advising and educating the public and does provide a public health code section for enforcement. But again, enforcement at the moment is being offered as a, as a method of last resort. So there is guidance available through the state of Pennsylvania.
Hey, I'm sorry. I, I would like to suggest that our police department already might be helpful in this, in this kind of activity. I, I spoke to an IUP policeman just today. And he told me that, and one of the things that concerns me, by the way, as far as behavior, is people refusing to mask up going into a, into a business or a public building. And I think we should be available to assist those businesses. And I, but I think we're available to do that right now. And, and again, Chief, maybe I was misled. My understanding was that the sheet store on Wayne Avenue had someone who came in. They asked him to wear a mask. He, he declined and was belligerent. They called the police. I'm not sure if it was our police or IUP's police, but both responded because you have a relationship to back each other up and took care of the situation. Justin, do you recall that?
I don't have, I don't have that specific case in front of me, although certainly I agree with everything that you said. I agree with everything that you said about, you know, cooperative effort. We've been responding to complaints. We respond to all complaints. And so certainly that doesn't sound out of the ordinary. And certainly someone disorderly at a business would receive a police response should we know about it and if the business requested that. and if the business requested that.
I just think if there was a, if there was a, if there was a terrible outbreak, maybe we have the opportunity, and I sort of made this suggestion half-hearted, quite frankly, in one of my emails. Peter, declare an emergency, and then we can act quicker than waiting. It just seems to me like we owe it to our community to try to maintain, which many of you have done very well and have already started, a positive approach rather than a negative one. And I think when we have had offers, which we've had them this evening from members of the community, that they will assist us in those efforts, and they might have some ideas. I think that's a good place to start. And I'm not discounting the possibility of an ordinance, certainly, at some point. But I think we should pursue a positive approach first. Thanks.
Jim, Ben, and then Boom.
All right, I'll go third.
Okay.
I think Gee, after that.
Thank you. I kind of want to second what Jim is saying, because I'm not 100% sure how we're dealing with the revised version, but we're guessing we're going to have a delay before we pass anything, because we've got a substantially revised version as well. And so if we're going to have a delay of 10 days, while that's advertised, you know, waiting to our next council meeting doesn't seem totally out of line to let the education aspect of this maybe sink in. So let Together Indiana sink in. Perhaps let this Claris program get off the ground, start to sink in. And also, just can it give us a chance? I, part of this was put forward, I think, as a response to the restaurant and tavern owners asking for an ordinance. And so I think we're representing that side of the businesses pretty well. But having spoken to a couple of the retail business folks, and we heard from, in the public comment, in the red email from one of the jewelry store owners, that there seems to be on the retail side, maybe a little bit less excitement about this. And so in that 10 to 14 days, if we could pull the downtown businesses and get a better sense of this, because I think that's, one of my concerns here is, you know, blowback affecting our businesses. And, you know, even if, you know, 10% of the threats of never shopping in Indiana again are valid and will be carried out, that there's already fairly thin margins happening downtown. So if we can, if we can handle this through carrots rather than sticks, I would be all for that. And, you know, maybe we start out in the next two weeks, the folks that, in the revised version, are empowered to enforce this, give them a stack of parking passes. And so people wearing masks, hand them a parking pass. So the next time they come to downtown Indiana, they can park for free. You know, just start to, you know, influence the, on the positive side. And then we're going to see this thing again, I think, in the revised form at our next meeting, which is only in a couple of weeks, two weeks, I think. And if things are heading in a poor direction, then we use the legal stick approach. I guess that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ben. Boom?
I agree with Ben and Jim. I think the carrot approach is better. I mean, it's more collaborative, it's more positive. I'm also worried about our borough staff having to enforce a mass ordinance, which would put them in the position, in a difficult position, because they would be enforcing an ordinance that we have known opposition to. So in light of the opposition and the current tumultuous times in which we are now living, I think a pause would be good and wait until the next meeting that we have. And in the meantime, use the positive collaboration carrot approach, advertise, educate, collaborate, instead of going straight to the stick approach and threatening them with the fine. I, it seems overly harsh, and I think, I think we should give it a pause. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up with these three. I'm on board with giving it a pause or throwing it away altogether. The idea that we're going to prevent infections from increasing by policing mask wearing of like large gatherings, at that point, they've already spread it. You're not going to know until they're already gathering its spread. So there's just, for me, some issues with how effective it is going to be, even if we do have some sort of policing of this. Because most of these schools we've seen that have gotten, you know, where they're shutting down and going online, it's large parties, and we're going to see that. And I don't know how this is going to stop that. Most of them don't follow our social media accounts. And if they're going to wear a mask, they'll wear a mask. If they don't, they don't. And I don't really know if this kind of like one-to-one enforcement is going to filter through the student population and get them all online. And it's unfortunate. I mean, I'm scared, I'm going to, I'm not going to be going out and doing as much while this whole thing works its way out, you know? But that's just going to, what we have to deal with. I just don't think this ordinance is the correct choice.
Yeah. Gee?
I guess I want to agree. So a month, sorry, a month ago, we passed three motions in a row. And they, you know, I've been saying that they were educate, collaborate, and then enforce. And I think we are on our way, but it seems like our enforcement kind of jumped in front of our opportunities to educate folks and some of our opportunities to collaborate. And we heard that tonight. And I got a lot of feedback from a lot of folks about, particularly that, Jim. I appreciated your comments, and particularly the emails that you mentioned. There certainly is a horrible impression about what this ordinance is or isn't going to do, and a lot of confusion about what it is or isn't going to do. And I think the point that this, that you made, Casey, an ordinance isn't going to do it. It's really, it's, that's the third, that's the third one, right? Educate first, then it's collaborate, and then it's enforced. And it's got to be the third one, because honestly, it's the least effective at actually changing behavior. We have launched Together Indiana. I agree, it'll be tough to really push that out of the student population. We are definitely going to need to be able to collaborate with IEP. I think I saw something in one of the community development reports that we are going to be collaborating on some signs. I think we should definitely take up the opportunity to work with the Chamber of Commerce, and again, work on some signage that really indicates what's expected. I know we do have some signs in buildings already, but if we can add to that, you know, what is expected and where. The, there is still urgency, and I don't want us to lose that urgency. And one of those pieces is that we already have about 2,000 new residents in Indiana, new residents in Indiana that have just come here and are learning how to live in Indiana under a pandemic. And to their credit, IEP has done a great job. As you walk down, walk around campus, I'm talking about freshman students that are in town, they're now our residents. And if you walk around campus, it's really clear that IEP wants them to mask up all the time. And it's, you know, we need to make that really clear, that that's also the expectation in town. Now, when I say all the time, I want to reiterate that it's really just the same thing as the governor has put out. You obviously don't need to put a mask when you're in your garden. And it's really all about, if you are not, if you're in a public, if you're in a place where you're expected, you're likely to interact with the public, and you're not able to maintain a six-foot distance, then a mask is required. And I think that mirrors exactly what the governor does. But I would agree, I think that we haven't, the message got out much faster than we were able to control here. We move at the speed of government in a lot of ways. I think we do the best we can. The change, I think there are some significant changes that the particular ordinance probably could use. I think some of them are in this revised one, but expanding the, from just code department to police department. And, you know, to the extent that we are preparing our community for the arrival of a lot of new residents, and in particular the parties we've heard about, I think it would be really prudent for us to think about the ability to, again, reinforce the small gatherings, right? Large gatherings. If you go out, if you drive into Indiana these days, there's a blinking sign outside of the borough that says, welcome to Indiana, drive safely, wear a mask, avoid gatherings. And so I think, you know, that's another piece that we probably want to enforce. And the positives, right? How can we work together? This is really, this is somewhat in the messaging. It's really disappointing to hear some folks say that they're not going to come to Indiana because of this. I actually heard, I got a lot of feedback from people saying, I am now coming to Indiana. I got an email and said, I never write in all caps, but here's all caps. I will start spending money in downtown Indiana if there's a mask ordinance. And what we have to remember here is that we need to be together fighting this virus, not fighting each other. Another really relevant message I got from a borough resident was they're afraid that from this ordinance, you're going to have resident titted against resident. And I think that is also a horrible idea. And, you know, I've been the victim of that over the last couple of days, and that exactly, the exact thing has happened. And it's, you know, it's, it's really disappointing. And, you know, I think we have an opportunity here over the next 10 days to do a real push on what is the intention of this. I think it's really important that we just mirror what the governor has done and not with the regulations at the state level, and not necessarily have more stringent requirements, even if we might want them, and even if some other communities are doing them. I think it's really important, we mirror what the governor has done. So we can, so we can use our education capabilities and our collaboration capabilities before we need to enforce. So I, I think everybody's sort of on the same page. I think our, this message, our message got, it's way ahead of us, and we could use a pause.
Excuse me?
Could I add a couple of comments, please?
Yes, and then Betsy.
Gerald, I'm glad to hear what you said about your vision as you've been on campus the last couple of days. Is that, because I share that vision. And I heard some things prior to this about how these kids are not masking. Maybe, but, and I don't mean to be anecdotal, but in the last seven days, I've been on campus every day. I take my dog for a walk on campus every day, because I want to see how these kids are acting when they come in. They're masking more than our residents are. And I'm astounded how they're wearing masks. They're wearing masks when they're by themselves, walking down the street, which I don't do. So I think, I'm actually kind of proud of the students that I've seen so far. And maybe, maybe I've seen the wrong ones, but it seems like they're doing a hell of a nice job, quite frankly, as far as masks are concerned. Secondly, I think it was pointed out today, talking about small gatherings. I read something, and I, and it referenced a, what you would call a porch party. And I think I read that we already have an ordinance on 10 people, no more than 10 people, well, is that, is that true?
It expired.
Is that right? Okay, and what I read, I guess that it was so. So we've had that in the past. So obviously, we've enforced that in the past.
It came through the emergency declaration, Jim.
I'm sorry?
It came through the emergency declaration. So, you know, that was when the pandemic first started.
Oh, okay. All right.
But Jim, I think, you know, if we're able to mirror the 25 and 250 members, like you said, we, in a week or two weeks, we really do see a spike, and we find out that those numbers are too high, and we need to do another emergency declaration. That option is also on the table, that would be able to further restrict those things.
Well, yeah, I mean, we did that before. We did that when this thing started, remember? We limited large gatherings, and I thought that was pretty effective. Or at least I thought compliance was pretty.
And can I step in here, just in the
You're the boss.
Of following order, rather than get dialogues between members. Betsy, and then I think I've seen Sean expressing an interest.
Thank you. Can I ask the chief one more question? Justin, in what I understood what you said and what I read online, law enforcement is authorized to issue warnings and citations for those who don't comply. So in a situation where you're not getting response, and will you use those tools in your toolkit?
We have not yet come across a situation where compliance or non-compliance has been an issue worthy of enforcement. We have several times responded to community or a community member's complaint regarding a gathering or a business being open outside of governor's order. And for all of those occasions, to date, we've been able to achieve a level of compliance that's made us comfortable. At the end of the day, there are tools available in the administrative code and in the public health code that could be used by a police department in the state of Pennsylvania. But again, those are not being widely used. And all law enforcement agencies, and I'm aware, are following guidance of educating and advising prior to. But specific to your question, there are tools currently available that I believe could be, should we be pushed that direction?
Yes, so one follow-up. A situation that I was aware of in the spring, I think while we were, in the late spring, a gathering involved officers, and education was used. Thank you. But if that event had moved and still stayed as significant, and you had to return, would that be a possible tool?
Well, it remains a tool. I'm not specific, I'm not certain of the specific instance.
No, I'm just asking.
You know, we would use, we would use it as a tool, certainly, available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Sean?
I've got a couple of points.
Thank you.
Okay, super quick. First of all, I appreciate the democratic nature of this deliberative body, and I will happily accept whatever our judgment is. And I'm glad we're able to have this debate, number one. Number two, this debate would not be occurring in most of our peer nations, right? The question about masks is not viewed as a political one or one of personal identity. And I personally find it very problematic that we have to have the discussion in these terms. We have already lost 170,000 people. Eric Barker, in his comments, made reference to World War II. In World War II, there was no question about the sacrifices that we made, right? There was no question about there being limits to consumption because of the war effort. So for me, we've lost a lot of people already. Third point, education. I'm really curious. I mean, I like the idea about a positive message, but how big is that audience of people who don't know that masks make a difference? For us to ground our efforts in this notion that we're going to communicate with these people, and we're going to change their opinions, that is, I think, very aspirational, but I'm troubled by it, because I don't think that there's a very large audience. People who are choosing to wear masks now are not doing it out of ignorance. They're doing it out of a set of other motivations that are not grounded, I believe, in requisite science. And to the question about, do we want to enforce an ordinance for which there's known public opposition? Let me share with you other ordinances and laws that we pursue. That is, the drinking age of 21, speed limits, and cannabis use. All three of those have clear public oppositions. But we, as servants who watch for the public good in one way or another, have chosen to enforce those. So I don't think that that ought to be the means by which we make choices when we're concerned about the public good. I'm sorry for my, I'm sorry if I've gone too long. I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
I saw Sarah Stewart and then Sarah Steelman. I did see Sarah Stewart's hand first.
Okay, I'll be quick. I just wanted to say, basically, I want to support what Sean was saying. I really agree strongly with I I really agree strongly with what you were saying in that in that last comment particularly. And I also sort of wonder how much positive messaging we can do that we aren't already doing. I mean, I, every business that I go into has a sign on the front door saying, you need to wear a mask, whether it's phrased as, you have to wear a mask, we encourage you to wear a mask. I still see the same results in almost every store, which is a majority of people are wearing masks and then a handful of people just aren't. And they sort of look like they're waiting for someone to call them on it. And it is intimidating for those of us who are wearing our masks and are trying to do the right thing. And I was really appreciative of people who showed up to comment tonight, particularly the UU pastor, Elizabeth Mount, I believe, who said that the nature of this ordinance is is really not punitive. The nature of it is about caring for each other. And as she pointed out, if only people who are worried wear the mask, it's not going to be effective. And I just think we need to, we need to keep that in mind. And and I know that things will, things may look very different in a couple of weeks. And I think that we'll just have a clearer picture of how dangerous the return of the IUP students really is and how that will change our our case numbers. So maybe it will be, you know, it will right itself when the next Borough Council meeting happens. But I I just appreciate everything that Sean said, and I I agree strongly.
Okay, Sarah Steelman, home, and then Jim.
Thanks, Peter. One thing that keeps coming up repeatedly and and not unreasonably is that the business people in downtown Indiana are afraid of losing business. The reality is that they have already lost business in many cases because we don't have people masking. And people who are in a high risk situation don't want to show up in downtown Indiana. In addition to the things that we heard in the comments, I had a letter from a friend who lives not in the borough, but in Indiana County. And her experience has been that before the pandemic started, she spent a lot of time, and she estimates about 80% of her disposable income in downtown Indiana. As once the pandemic started and once the mask recommendations went into effect, she was still coming to downtown Indiana until she asked an employee in a downtown business to please pull up her or his mask and was verbally attacked for doing so. Now, what she does is, once a month, she drives to State College. And she does all her shopping in State College that she doesn't do online. And she said explicitly, she does that because State College has an ordinance. State College enforces their ordinance. And when she's in State College, she feels safe and comfortable. And when she's in downtown Indiana, she doesn't feel safe and comfortable. And I think that we have a responsibility to our downtown business owners to try and help all of the people who are currently staying home and ordering online to enable them to come back to downtown Indiana. Let's face it, a lot of the people in this community are in a high risk category, one way or another. And by saying, no, we're going to make, wearing a mask, absolutely voluntary, we're telling them that they need to look elsewhere for goods and services. And that's exactly what they're doing. Now, as I look at the draft that we have now, it looks as if, if we voted for this, if we passed this today, it would still have to be published again. And unless we call the special meeting in 10 days, the next time that we would give it final consideration is September the 8th, which is three weeks away. That would certainly be long enough for us to have a reasonable idea whether the IUP students are indeed masking up, whether things are getting worse, or whether, in the best of all possible worlds, the educational program and the various positive reinforcements are working. And I I think we can go ahead and we could pass this tonight. And it still wouldn't go into effect for some considerable time. And that's what other people on council are asking for. And if we, if we decide three weeks out that, no, it's a bad idea and we don't need it, then we just don't hold on it again.
Jim, you have something?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I I don't have fundamental, excuse me, fundamental disagreements with anyone. But but I don't know the bright answer either. And and there's a lot of questions in here. And one thing that we're not asking is, does enforcement actually work? Does enforcement do a better job of providing the behavior we want as opposed to encouragement and and positive things, communication and education? And the reason I ask that question is I've spoken to more than one policeman. Look, I'm not a professional in that field. I I've spoken to more than one policeman, none, by the way, employed by us, because I thought that probably would be invalidated because they might just say what they think I want to hear or the opposite perhaps. But in both cases, and I think they were sincere, they thought that, Sean, you're right, that the people that aren't wearing masks aren't wearing masks out of ignorance. They're wearing masks in large part out of defiance. And they believe that that individual actually, with an ordinance or the, would make them more defiant. And that that would, that would create a greater sense of defiance among that particular individual. I don't know that that's the case. But it's a reasonable theory, too, and and something, you know, we should consider. How effective would an ordinance be as opposed to positive reinforcement?
I can only say that when we decided that it was not safe to have people smoking in public, there was hostility at first. But it calmed down, but it was after laws were passed. Ben?
This is a follow up to Jim. Because one, just looking at the facial covering aspect exclusively, one of my questions since the the first draft has been, how do we, if there, if there's this this truck sized loophole where you simply say you have a medical condition and that it's, then we have to say, okay, carry on. How do we, I mean, and I think the revised version, there's an aspect where we can, we can ask you to provide appropriate documentation. But then we also reference Dr. Levine's message where she says that that there won't, there won't be any asking for documentation. So my my nightmare scenario on this actually is that we pass this and we get an influx of people to downtown looking to prove a point as, because co-pokes have mentioned, there's, there's some folks who seem to have taken this on as a, some kind of badge of honor, which is a, anyways. But they, that they come in and they they proclaim that they've got a medical excuse. And then we are, we are toothless to do anything with that. And then they sort of smugly walk off, spreading whatever they may or may not have, right? And so that's, that is, to me, the the worst case scenario with this is that we pass it and then we we aren't able to enforce it. And so if I'm, and maybe Niva, you can speak to this or someone else that make me feel better that that this is actually would be enforceable, I would, I would feel comforted.
Is that my cue?
I think so.
So on the medical excuse thing, it's interesting. And the way I would view that, Ben, is that the the police and and or whoever's going to enforce that, enforce this because they deal with the public every day. And by the way, both your police department and your code enforcement department, in my experience, are very good at educating, informing, and giving people fair warning. There's no heavy handed enforcement happening in the borough. I've had really good experiences in even cases that ultimately were litigated, that every effort was made to be good customer service representatives of the borough. And this ordinance doesn't in any way change that. But on the medical excuse, the way I envision this is, if there is a sense that you're getting jerked around by someone saying they have a medical issue, right? Then you can cite them if that's where you're at in the process, right? You've warned them, they come back, or they're belligerent, or whatever the situation is. You can cite them and have them show up to the borough with a medical excuse in order to mitigate that citation. That's the way I would handle the medical issue. Because I, it is difficult. And Levine's order acknowledges that that's difficult. And it puts a burden on people to get medical information in their hands, which is always a difficult and sensitive issue. But it isn't. If you, if you're cited because we believe you're not being truthful or you're being belligerent or you're a repeat offender, right? You know, we have the discretion as the borough to decide whether requesting medical documentation or any documentation related to any of the exceptions, by the way, makes sense. And that's, that's the way I view that. That's in the amended version. So, you know, it's been an interesting evening. I wanted to, I I gotta take the opportunity to mitigate a couple of, I think, misunderstandings. Jim's correct in that it is difficult to sort of get clear direction from all of you, especially when you're moving quickly in new areas, right? And everybody is moving quickly. This isn't just the borough. Everybody is moving quickly in uncharted territory here. I would disagree that it was sloppy. What I would say to you is, all the facial covering piece does is incorporate the order of of Ms. Levine. So the original ordinance incorporates, and it actually literally, by the way, says Exhibit A is Levine's order. It incorporates it by reference. The State Department of Health and the Governor's Office calls upon businesses and municipalities to enforce this because obviously, it can't get enforced single hand, enforced single handedly out of Harrisburg. So so that's, that's that part. It is already the law. So a lot of the comments tonight have been, I'm not going to shop there if you make me wear a mask. And I mean, well, that ship has sailed, people, right? That it is, that order is an order. And and it requires that people mask under the circumstances outlined in Ms. Levine's memo. I would say that if you read her memo, it's it's her order. It's pretty thoughtful, right? I mean, to answer some of the questions, no. If you're walking to your mom's house down a length of sidewalk, you don't have to wear a mask if you're able to social distance or there's nobody else on the sidewalk. It doesn't apply to schools. Schools are arms of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and they have their own regulations. We don't regulate the schools in, inside the schools and the students and teachers' behavior. So there's a lot of basic misunderstandings. A couple of things that just weren't clear to me when I drafted it was, who's going to enforce it? Because that's an issue for any municipality. And I, my recommendation was not to have the police enforce it for a number of reasons we can talk about if you want. But that was my recommendation. I didn't have clear direction from you on that point. The revised version includes police, similar to what State College Borough did, because it's your only 24/7 department. And I do, I did understand that gap in the enforcement issue. The the police are the ones getting called to, to, you know, parties and houses and, you know, kids who are on the street with no masks or people who are belligerently going into businesses on purpose without a mask. So that, I I added in the revised version, the police back into the equation so that the Borough Council can choose who and where to put those resources in enforcement. So that, that was a gap in in the ordinance. I just did not know what your expectation was. So I followed sort of what my thought was on how it should be enforced. But the first iteration of this really is just meant to provide you with a tool to enforce facial coverings. Facial coverings are not political issues. So again, a lot of the comments really are about people's, it's not a violation of your constitutional rights. The same people who are raising that issue, you understand, get into a car that's registered with a license they carry that they have to have. And they stop and buy a bottle of wine and show an ID. Because why? You have to be 21 to buy it. So so I mean, it's not a violation of anybody's constitutional right. Is a, it is a, it is a typical and reasonable way to to regulate this issue. So I don't view it as personal, you know, like if Jim doesn't like it or it's political. I'm just telling you, the drafting of it is a challenge. It's new. And and I did a decent, I did good, a good amount of research on where your authority comes from to do this so that, so that I was comfortable in making sure it was drafted within the four corners of what your authority was. But there are nuts and bolts that definitely have to be unwound. Having said that, here's how the passing or not passing of this would work. It's a mistake to wait too long because everything moves slowly in government. And no law is passed after you wait and see if people violate it a lot. You have books and books of ordinances that are enforced by really smart people. And they choose to use discretion and thoughtful enforcement. And so this would be no different. But it will take a while to pass this. You can pass the facial covering tonight, just as it is. We can advertise an amended version. It will take 10 days and you have to. So you can pass this tonight. If you amend it, you have to advertise an amended version 10 days prior. You can take this version and work on it. But you will still have to readvertise it, no less than seven days, seven full days before your next meeting where you might want to act on it, no more than 30. So there is, that public notice piece is still going to be part of the equation in terms of of time, no matter how you do it. So I I don't have a preference. I'm just telling you that whether you use the updated version, which we can talk about, or you go back to just facial coverings or however you do it, it's going to take time to put in place. And the emergency declaration isn't really particularly helpful in circumventing because it's still a drafting. It's still an exercise in getting from you your expectations, getting it drafted, and then getting it advertised.
Hello?
Jim?
Niva, you're right. I don't know how the hell you get a direction from 12 people. And and going forward, I don't know how you're going to either. For example, today, it it was suggested that if we're going to make recommended edits to the newer version, gotta do it today. Oh, jeez, I just, I just, I didn't think that was the way we should operate. I don't think that's the way government should operate on a, in a hurry, in a rush. You know, can we take the pause time? If if council is willing to pause, can we take the pause time to give our suggestions? And and you're still liable to get 12 different bloody suggestions, right? On on the the items that that concern us. And and there are some that concern us.
I think all of your concerns that I've heard from council are legitimate concerns. I'm only really commenting on the things that you're going through and the speed with which this has to move. Or, you know, I mean, the idea, first of all, I didn't come up with this idea. So I did get direction from you. Somehow, maybe a few of you have forgotten that. But I thought the direction actually was pretty clear. And it was during a public meeting on Zoom. And we were all here and I got you. So I I had direction. Why?
Yeah. It was pretty vague, though. It was three motions, real quick, that I don't even think they were on the agenda, by the way. I could be wrong about that. And it was an ordinance. There was, there was really no, and I'm not being critical, Cheryl, honestly. But there was very little specificity in, you know, we need an ordinance.
Well, I mean, and that's fine. I mean, that's fine.
And so then it was up to you to say, okay, what the hell these guys mean by that, I guess, right?
Yeah, well, to some extent, yeah. I mean, I did have some direction from that. And, and the genesis was the idea of the students returning, and what impact that would have on the permanent residents of the borough. And so that was very clear, that direction was very clear to me. And I would also tell you, you're seeing other universities are returning, and you're seeing, you're seeing what's going on out there. It's pretty clear. I'm about to send my on and off of the camera tonight, was I'm trying to get my kid out the door to go back to college. And so all of those, or to go to college, he's going to college for the first time. So all of those, you know, everybody has these concerns, and, and I understand why it's moving at a fast pace. I just would say to you, the public, there's a place for public participation, and I think that that, that it worked pretty well tonight. But you also, you know, if you lick your finger and stick it into the wind, and ask every business owner and every member of the public, not only do I, will I have trouble getting direction from the 12 of you, but I have no, you're not gonna get a product from me. I just can't see how I can, I can do that in a timely way for you. I, I would just encourage you to err on the side of getting something in place, just like all of your other ordinances. This is really no difference, and dozens and dozens of laws you have on the books, rather than waiting at the last minute, thinking I'm gonna turn this out fast, because it's probably not gonna happen.
Can I suggest a, can I suggest, I mean, so we have a revised ordinance in front of us. I'm not sure where we are in the process. There's probably supposed to be a motion at some point on the table. But to make it to, I know it's, I'm looking at the time. There are updates to this revised ordinance. If we were able to advertise this ordinance, or a version of it here in the next, you know, 10 or 15 minutes, decided we want to advertise this one with the additions or changes, we would again have, you know, up to, we wanted to wait until our September 8th meeting. We have a lot of time to, we'd be advertising, we'd have a lot of time to get some feedback, and then decide if we want it on September 8th, or, or before. I mean, does it, does it make sense to spend a little bit of time, Peter, talking about this, these revisions?
If we're gonna vote on it, as, as the whole thing, obviously, that are coming into play, I have a sense myself that we could vote to advertise this revised version again. And if we get beat up too badly, and we get scared, we can just not approve it in three weeks. And we can use those three weeks to meet with people, hear their concerns, do some educating on our part, maybe get some educating from them. I don't know. It may change somebody's mind. I can see holding a forum for downtown businesses, for example. Once they've actually seen it, and if they've actually read it, we heard Shane Koller hadn't really read it, he just had reacted to rumors about it. Or with Ken Arthur's, I guess, who was reacting that way. So that's how I feel, but we can't vote on anything without a motion.
I move we re-advertise the amended ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
There are a lot of seconds there.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, all right, I'll take them.
Okay, so that, that authorizes the expenditure of the funds to advertise an ordinance no later than seven days before the September 8th meeting, which is really 10 days, because I got three days to get it to the paper. And I don't have a calendar in front of me, so maybe, Michael, if you do, you could look at that. But, so I would need comments back from you all. So drafts are not public documents, right? The only public document that will exist in the process is the one where you say, "Turn it out and advertise it." So I need, I can get your comments if you send them directly to me. And then if they are comments that I can assimilate, I will just assimilate them in the ordinance. Like, there were comments, and no offense, Sarah, I didn't understand the whole diatribe about the name of IUP, and, and you know I don't care, right? I, I only want you to just have an ordinance that you want, and you like, and that properly names the university. So I, all that stuff you can give to me, and I'll make those changes. If I don't know, or understand, or conflicts, then I can deal with you one-on-one about those changes. And I can move, I will move as fast as I can, and, and if it looks like we're on the same page, I'll get a product out of that that I can say is a collaborative product that we can advertise. If there's just too much difference in the comments and conflict, which there may be, because there's a lot going on in, on this meeting, then we may get to a September meeting with, with a draft that, that you don't agree with. But you're gonna get a product on, you know, sent to you prior to that time, to give me the thumbs up to advertise. The, the risk is, I don't want to advertise something, because you know, it probably costs about $600 a pop for that advertisement. Is that, do you know Kyle? Was Kyle gone? Oh, Kyle, do you remember how much it costs to advertise?
It varies by the line, you know, the line of print.
Yeah, but it's expensive, correct?
It's definitely triple digits, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in the hundreds of dollars. Which, by the way, in the scheme of the world is not a big deal, but I don't want to do it frivolously. And so if I don't have a product that I can advertise, then it's just not gonna get done by September 8th meeting, and you'll know, you'll hear from me that.
Madam Solicitor, may I suggest that if you, it needs to be advertised a week before the meeting of the 8th?
Yes.
That you make the 25th, a week from today, the drop deadline for committee members, so that you have time to be able to get that in pieces, right, get to be able to assimilate the comments?
Is that exactly 10 days, Sean?
Is it?
Or, I mean, seven days?
No, I think you would have more.
Yeah, because I need, I need two to three days to get it to the paper, because they have a turnaround there.
So if, if the 25th is your, your, your dead, your drop dead date, three days is the 28th, that would give us one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days.
Perfect. Jim, sorry, sorry, I just can't reach a calendar.
Yes.
I hate to drag it out. So we're here, we've got, so 100 folks that are watching, and are probably wondering, what are the revisions that we're talking about right now? It probably makes sense to, I mean, we haven't done a very good job communicating, so we could maybe do a little bit better job if we can discuss at least some of these changes that we're looking at at this draft, so that it's not a total surprise. It, it just seems prudent to.
Do you want me to just run through them?
Please.
That would be, that would be great. I mean, I understand where we're at our time, but if we're able to do that, that would be great.
Okay, so the first thing that I did was, I changed some of the recitals so that I added reference to a second Department of Health order that dealt with gatherings and distancing. Because I, the facial covering section stayed the same. To avoid confusion, I added language that the exceptions set forth in Exhibit A, again, that will be the actual order from the Department of Health. The exceptions set forth in Exhibit A shall also apply, and persons claiming exceptions may be required to provide appropriate documentation. I then added a section on limited gatherings. Indoor and outdoor gatherings at any dwelling unit in the borough are limited to 10 persons, including occupants regardless of type of dwelling unit. Just to be clear, dwelling unit and occupants are already defined terms in your ordinances. So that is really just a reference back to your ordinances. Gatherings in public spaces such as rights of way, borough properties, and parks are limited to 25 people. And then, and this is consistent really with what municipalities are doing. The section does not apply to gatherings in religious institutions and services, private businesses, and Commonwealth agencies and entities. The entities may be otherwise regulated. Those entities are regulated by the Department of Health and the governor's orders also. All persons and businesses in the borough are encouraged to comply with guidance and measures. So that just gets to the issue of, you know, typically, we don't regulate religious institutions. You may or may not agree with that, but practically, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. If you're sitting, you know, next to someone without a mask in church, what does that mean once you leave church? So the law, that line is just meant to encourage everybody to, to practice the, the five protocols that are, the CDC has called out, essentially. I added a section on waiting lines, which deals with the lines that extend outside of businesses, just reminding people to distance and to stay a distance from outdoor seating. You went to the trouble, I think, of encouraging outdoor seating. You don't now, and, and, and by the way, you're allowed to sit down and eat your food, or drink your beverage, and take your mask off while you're doing that, per the orders, you know, of the Department of Health. So I didn't want to clutter that, the opportunity to expand your outdoor seating opportunities by having a bunch of people lined up, you know, down the sidewalk to get in for coffee or whatever. So that's where that came from. Section 5 just deals with the terminology, as I mentioned. I expanded the enforcement opportunities to include police and your parking enforcement. I added the word summary to the civil citations, and I made the effective time on that immediately. If you noticed when you read it before, the ordinance itself sunsets either January 1st, 2020, or upon the rescission of the July 1st order.
I, that must be 2021.
I'm sorry, it says 2021. I said 2020. So 2021, it expires or upon the rescission of the July 1, 2020, order of the Department of Health. And that actually should include the July 1st and 15th. So any questions about that?
I had a question about the limitation in terms of size of occupants. If, if the, I know the State College one also had a 10 persons in a dwelling unit, limited to 10 persons and 25 people in public right of way. Is that, does that mirror what the state order is for gatherings, or is that more restrictive?
Well, it's not more, it's less, right? So for indoor and outdoor gatherings in a dwelling unit, that really is an occupancy issue, code issue, and deals with, you know, house parties, porch parties, backyard parties. And so it is an intentional limitation on the number of people. It's, that is not in the current order. 25, so 25 in, you're thinking of the 25 to 50 rule, which is, that's not what this is. Because we're not regulating, you know, the private businesses, the things that private businesses do.
But if there was like a soccer game at Water Street Park that was over 25 people, that would be a violation?
Under this, yeah.
I remind everybody, they're playing baseball up in Gabriel Street, and I believe that's part of the borough.
Yes.
Well, so make it 50 or 150. I mean, that's like where you guys have to look at the details of it. I'm not playing soccer in the borough, in case you were wondering. I am down here. So the, 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 the nuts and bolts are the problem, the thing that I have trouble with, Jim. The nuts and bolts, as you, as you mentioned, it's difficult to get direction on that. I can't tell if you don't read it, or if you don't think about it till the meeting, but I have to have you guys like engage in those nuts and bolts, because I don't have any way of knowing the answer to whether you, you know.
That's right, and, and my concern here, God, I apologize for dragging this being out, although I'm not the only one, by the way. If, if I send a note to you to say, "I want to strike this complete," which, which I will, in several occasions, if we do this, and, and someone else sends you a note that says, "I think this should be strengthened," I don't know how you're gonna do this. I mean, I'm willing to give it the old college try.
Well, look, it's my, this is not my first job. And so what I would tell you is, I, I have to sort through all that. I mean, and that's what I do. But if I don't get the comments, then we end up on a Zoom call on the night that we've already advertised it, and I can't do much about it. So what I would say is, I'm perfectly capable of assimilating your comments, and if I hit a wall with that, then I'm gonna have to say to you, hey, we're gonna, we need another public meeting to discuss this, because the comments that I've received, I can't reconcile. May be true, may not be true. But I'll come out with a product that will be a product of the whole corpus of the Borough Council, if, you know, provided you gave me comments. And so, you know, will it get done by September 8th? I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I don't know. It's, it's, it's a tough issue. It really shouldn't be, by the way, but I get that it's a tough issue, and I get that there are a lot of opinions. You know, so we'll just have to do the best that we can.
I'm right, am I not, Neva, in thinking that we, as a group, cannot get together and discuss it?
Say this again?
We cannot, among ourselves, discuss it.
Right. Yeah, and that's just, that's.
But we can't discuss it among ourselves.
Yeah, in public, you can discuss it, and then you can send your edits to me, to me directly, not to the whole group. So it's cumbersome, and, you know, time-consuming, and, and all of that, I get. But it has the potential to yield a product, believe me. And, and sometimes, some part of this is better than nothing, right? If you all agree, let's say, on facial coverings, then maybe that's where the ordinance ends up. But, you know, it's a democratic process from the standpoint of how council, you know, decides ultimately to, to spend its, you know, policy efforts. And I just have to put it all together and get a product back to you.
Would it be possible to take this up under one of our currently scheduled committee meetings? I'm thinking, I think Public Safety is this week, Thursday. Is that right?
Yeah, that is an advertised, that is an advertised meeting. All of your committee meetings are advertised. That's one advantage you guys certainly have. So you can assign certain tasks to committees to get them done through those public meetings, to help with the drafting, or at least even give me an outline of, of elements. You can, I can phone in to that meeting if you wanna, like, literally go through the edits with me. Or you can just pummel me with a bunch of changes, and I'll assimilate them and send, send it back to even a committee that's meeting between now and the 25th.
I think we're in a motion right now to advertise this, and it sounds like we don't really want to advertise it, just.
No, I think we have to advertise it.
We've got, we've got, I'm sorry, we've got about to advertise it.
You're really just voting to advertise it by a certain date, if we have a product? And the reason for that, that is, you know, we've already talked about that. Just the timing of your meetings. We would literally be waiting until September 8th for you to authorize me to advertise it. So if you authorize me to advertise it, obviously, it doesn't get advertised if it's not in a final format.
Don, can we take this up at Public Safety?
Yeah, we can, and that's Thursday. That's two days from now. So it would be in a timely manner.
I, I think it's our responsibility to look at this and try to get some feedback, and have another discussion about this. You know, we're all looking at it right now. I've got a couple of thoughts. I'm sure there's some typos, but, you know, if not Thursday, you know, we could take it up at Public Works, which makes a little bit less sense.
We've got administration coming, too.
When is administration coming?
And like you, you, you know, if you sent me comments, I don't know when your admin meeting is. If you send me comments, I can send you back a revision for the admin committee meeting. And whoever wants to attend that from council can certainly attend that.
And, and I think that, that the essential element is that committee members now send their comments, right?
It would be helpful to me if you would do that.
Well, no, but I mean, like that, that's it. Because what, what we have to do, we have to find the spots
Yes.
There's dispute, right?
Or agreement.
And adjudicate them as quickly as possible, rather than permit the sort of, the penumbra of, of overall complaint, right? Complicate the process.
I love the word penumbra, by the way. Thank you. Love it. I do.
Don, what is? I, I don't have my calendar. It's two, next.
Administration is the 25th, one week from tonight.
If Thursday's too quick, could we, could we put it on? Does that make more sense to get folks a week to get, get folks back, uh, get feedback?
That would be a.
Administration would be happy to, to entertain.
But I don't know if there are things to be said already this Thursday, but we couldn't do it at both times.
Yeah, why not just start getting the comments to me? I'll, I'll start pumping out drafts. And, and then by the 25th, that committee should be looking at something closer to final form, at least in terms of the consensus building, part of it.
Yeah.
We don't think we need to vote.
We still need to vote on advertising, I believe. No worries.
Yes.
Jonathan has a question.
Your feet.
Uh, sort of for clarification, if we vote to advertise this new ordinance, does that mean we cannot vote to still enforce or enact the ordinance that's already been advertised?
Yes, we're refining.
Jonathan, it sounds to me like there's no appetite to enact it. And so I get what you're saying. It just sounds to me like that is not going to be an, a successful endeavor right now. And boy, Jim has his hand up.
Yeah. Uh, look, I'm retired, I don't have to get up and go to work tomorrow. That, that brings a thought to my mind. I don't, with all due respect, I don't think the revisions make it any better. So why don't we just table the existing, uh, wouldn't this be a lot simpler? I, I, and I think I heard sentiment earlier that, eh, maybe we just ought to deal with face masks and not worry about these other things like standing in line or whatever. Uh, maybe we don't want to go any further than, than face masks because it was basically a masking ordinance to begin with. Wouldn't it be better to table tonight? Uh, which gives you an indefinite time when, when a majority is ready to bring it off the table and, and, and pass it? Doesn't that make more sense?
I think, Jimmy, the question is to let it go to a vote now.
Yeah, but then you have an ordinance, then you are, then you've created a law, which not everybody's comfortable with doing right away.
No, we haven't. All we've done is we've advertised, we've advertised an ordinance for possibility of voting upon it.
Yeah.
It doesn't go into effect if we vote to advertise it now.
No, 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 I, I mean, do, is that the sentiment of the majority that they want to, they want to, uh, ultimately end up with something that looks like, uh, the revised? Or, or, and I heard some sentiment, I think, I'm pretty sure I did from general, if not others, that, well, maybe we don't need to go further than just being a masking ordinance. And, and if that's the case, if that's our sentiment, we already have that advertised. And we can save ourselves some money and save ourselves some time and just, and just table it.
Think the motion on the table now is the ordinance, not to table it.
Well, wait, the motion is to advertise the amended ordinance in its final form. That's what I think the motion is right now.
I stand corrected, yes.
Because this, this ordinance has been advertised, that doesn't mean you have to act on it.
That's right.
That this ordinance, meaning the facial mask ordinance, there's no motion to adopt or not adopt this ordinance. It was just advertised that you were going to consider it tonight. If you take no action on it, you take no action on it. So the question now is, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it still exists then as an advertised ordinance, correct?
Well, you would have to, it's, you would have to change, you would have, you can extend the time to consider this ordinance until September 8th, if you want, by doing it in public right now. So that the public, anyone who is interested in the facial covering ordinance is on the line because they've already received notice. And so they already will know that you are not going to consider this until this, this facial covering ordinance until September. So you don't have to re-advertise at that point. If you're going to change it by adding police, let's say, as an enforcement option, or being more specific about the exceptions, which seem to be confusion, confusing. If that's the case, then you just need to give me authorization to advertise it before, seven days before the next meeting. It really isn't. It, it's not as hard as we're making it, by the way. I mean, what, the process I was offering you is to let this ordinance sit because I, I am, I don't see the will to pass the facial covering ordinance in its current form. Let it sit, send me your revisions, I don't care what those are. Um, I will work up a draft and get it to you for the Thursday meeting and then the following admin committee meeting. And maybe that'll give you more of a sense of whether we can get to a place where you're more comfortable, those of you who are interested in an ordinance at all. I mean, that's all I can, that's all I can really offer within the construct of how these meetings work. You know, is to do it that way.
Whoa.
I know, that was Finn. He's indicating that I should get off the phone.
What can we do to call this question?
Um, well, we can see, are there other contributions or are we ready to vote? People understand that what we're voting on is to authorize, Niva, to advertise a revised ordinance, giving ourselves some time to offer suggestions before the actual advertisement goes out. Is that right? Have I got that right?
And keep in mind, because there's a comment on the Q and A for some unknown reason, keep in mind that what you will have then is an advertisement to consider the ordinance on September 8th, at which time that ordinance will be open to the public inspection when it gets advertised, will be available online, available to borough, et cetera. The public will have a chance then also to participate like they did tonight. So drafts are not public documents to, to quell the concern about why people aren't seeing the revised version. It's a draft. And when it gets advertised, that's when it becomes available for public inspection.
When will it be advertised then? On the 8th?
No, it would be advertised by the 25th, 26th, depending on when I can get it in the Indiana Gazette.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. We, we don't need a roll call for this stage, do we, Niva?
No.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye, braving your in.
Hi.
Aye.
Uh, keep it up there because it's not everybody. So one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight. Oh, his name?
Nay.
Nay.
No.
The ayes have it.
Three noes, yeah, eight, eight yes.
And one not voting?
That's only 11.
Or did we lose somebody?
Did we lose someone?
Kara, uh, Seelman was frozen.
So we have the vote. And it passes, so offer comments to Niva. We will be discussing it at the Public Safety meeting on Thursday of this week. And then, if necessary, also again, next Tuesday at the admin meeting.
Peter, I believe Ben needs.
Ready to have a public.
Ben has a question.
Just a technicality. Kyle, Michael, can you, since we're have, we're going to expand sort of the clientele of these meetings, could you make sure that all of council gets the Zoom invite for those, both those meetings?
Yes.
For those of us with jobs on my gym schedule, keep track of, so. I need to get it on a calendar before I do track of my life, so.
Yes, but I had actually just sent a, a chat over to Kyle because I, I think what we might want to do is just send out new links for both meetings so that we can, um, expand the, the public access for those meetings. And so we'll, we'll work on the, that, those technicalities and advertise those for you. And, and be sure to get the links out to everybody.
And please just email me. Not everybody, not reply all, just email me.
Yes, we can only discuss this in public meetings.
Which will be the next one on Thursday. Okay.
Oh, wait, we are.
Do we need to stay on for Josh or Pat Coonan?
I feel you do.
I'm not.
Aw, that is so unfair.
I'm leaving you, Poom. I'm going to get off before you can do it.
Good night, Niva, thank you very much.
Bye, thanks, guys.
Bye, Niva.
Our honor has been here all night.
Leave, I have what I need unless my esteemed colleague has anything that he wants to ask.
Bless you, Josh.
Do we need, did we adjourn the meeting, guys?
We haven't had a motion to adjourn yet.
I'm only adjourned?
Yeah.
Sir, second?
Second.
Do we have to answer Pat's question or anything?
We don't have to, but we will because we're nice that way and we like him to write good things about us. Do you have any questions for us, Pat?
Pat ended up mute.
He might be asleep.
He might be. I think you can hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Very good, okay. I just need some clarification on what exactly I just heard there. What was the vote on tabling?
We didn't vote on tabling.
Or let me rephrase it, on read, on advertising, what was the vote?
Vote was 11 to 3.
Eight to 3, you mean?
I mean, eight to 3, yes, eight to 3, turtling.
11 to 3.
So, so which members voted no? I think it was Poo, I think Casey, but I didn't catch the third.
McGowan.
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 Pardon me?
McGowan.
Jim McGowan.
I'm, I'll, I'll make you, okay, thank you. And, uh, so who wasn't there?
Nobody. Seelman had disappeared.
I think we're going to say.
Okay, Seelman did not vote, fine.
I think it was just because the connection was lost.
He had a bad connection, she is one of the observance right now.
Yeah.
I hear you. There's nothing specific about what is being put together, just basically whatever you, you suggest to Niva over the next few days at these committee meetings, would that be correct?
Right, close enough.
Yeah, the next two public committee meetings on Thursday, then the next one on Tuesday.
That's Public Safety and Administration.
Correct.
All right, um, I have a feeling there might be some questions on other things, believe it or not, but other things from tonight, but, uh, I think I can hold off that until calling in the morning, if that's no problem, you might.
It's fine.
This sounds good to me. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes what I need from you.
Thank you.
Your foot, would you be willing to send Pat and I the revised, uh, ordinance that will be put up for advertisement?
We don't have that yet.
Oh, that's right, it has yet to be created.
Yes, correct.
That, that's what I was trying to indicate to you before, Josh, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood that.
Thanks, everybody, you had a great time.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Yay, good night, y'all.
Well, please.
My supper.